With liberty and justice for all.
Now let's jump down real quick.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Crueby, at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we'll have approved the agenda. Is there any additions or anything to be amended to this?
I have no changes.
Okay. Did most approve the agenda as presented to you?
I mean, with...
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. All in favor of saying aye? Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from our February the third, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, safe expression period, and I have a few people I think who want to speak, so I'll read this short statement. We'll go into that. Safe expression period is the point of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county and what organization you represent. If, if, uh, if you wish to speak, uh, the board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything that you say into account in making, uh, future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close this expression. So we're in that, before we do that, I want to do something. Ms. Crueby.
You gotta get the middle.
No. Do I need my mask?
Well, if you want to. Don't look at it. I'm gonna call her a statement. I'm not stating forever. She has completed the program of completion for the, uh, Chairperson Institute, which I think you all must know. I've never been to it. They, like Virginia State Council County, uh, Baytown, Board of Chairperson Institute, specifically the program of completion, staying in the river of Scott County on January the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Good job. All right. There you go.
Looking good, aren't they? I know you're smiling. There's gonna be. Smile one more time.
Good job.
Thank you.
You did not, did you?
Thank you.
Congratulations. You've done good. We like to surprise people sometimes. I know I can see the, throw the deer in the head that look with her. She didn't have a clue what was coming with that, so. All right, with that, we are open for discussion. Anyone have stuff to bring before the board, you may do so.
Luke, uh, my name is Douglas. I was here a little over a year ago. Uh, the last time I spoke here, the world was a radically different place. At the time, I had one simple question for the board, and it was how dedicated to the Second Amendment sanctuary status they were, and if there was any efforts to work together for political cooperation with neighboring counties. Now I got another one. How prepared are we as a county to stand for our rights? How committed to the cause of defending our rights and guaranteeing the blessings of liberty for the next generation is this board? My reasoning for being so blunt with this line of questioning is simple. There are now real and tangible threats to those freedoms. Emboldened by their newfound power, which they are not afraid to flaunt, treacherous politicians and would-be tyrants are now trying to solidify their legitimacy and quash all resistance or challenges to it. If you think I'm being hyperbolic, then let's just review a few facts about the new reality we currently reside in. Over the past year, we've seen a radical expansion of authoritarian measures from across the country, in some cases, all the way down to the city and county level, and most obviously, all the way up to the federal. This power and precedent is not going to just disappear with this virus. Sorry. At this moment in time, governments can strip you of your First Amendment rights through executive order without having to pass it through a legislative branch. This is unheard of in the history of the country and fundamentally opposed to the values of the republic. Even in the worst crises this country has ever faced, if we wanted to curtail the freedom to the people, it had to be blessed by the people. Now, places like in Michigan, the governor is told, "You can't do this by the Supreme Court," does it anyways. The soft power of the judicial branch is completely and totally falling apart. You know, the, this reminds me of, uh, a quote from Andrew Jackson. "The court has made their, or has made their opinions known. Now let them enforce it." After that, we and the rest of the nation witnessed months of absolute lawless chaos. How did the current seated powers respond to this? They bailed them out of jail. I don't know that anything else needs to be said there. It served their political interest. Then as we moved forward towards the election, we saw a concerted and coordinated effort by the media to cover up the crimes of the current president and his son. NPR said that the accusations against Joe Biden and Hunter Biden were not worth the ink they would be printed in right before the election on October thirty-first. On December seventh, they said, "These threats and, or these threats and allegations of crime are a real and tangible threat to the, quote, 'new administration.'" They knew what it was, and they came forward after the fact, and remember, NPR is a state-funded organization, and just admitted it. Yeah, we covered it up. We hid it. And what are you gonna do about it? The election itself, uh, was controversial, to say the least. Changed, or challenged with accusations and evidence of fraud and foul play from multiple sources. I don't want to get too far into that because that's a whole rabbit hole that could really derail this whole conversation. This is especially true, though, in the battleground states, and when that evidence was presented to a court, they refused to even allow it to be admitted during their cases. Now, I don't know what the board's opinion is on that, but I don't think you can defend yourself or make an argument if you're not allowed to bring evidence. The, uh, oh, by the way, most of those judges, especially in Pennsylvania, that refused to admit the evidence, were all elected. So clear political bias as well. The, uh, the most incriminating change, however, and change in precedent, is the Supreme Court. Whenever the state of Texas brought a lawsuit forward against the state of Pennsylvania, the Supreme Court struck it down, claiming that the court does not have original jurisdiction in state-on-state cases, a patently absurd decision. The framers of the Constitution intended two purposes for the Supreme Court. First, to determine the constitutionality of the law that was passed by Congress, and second, to mediate disputes between states. They understood that if you could not work out your issues and differences through words, it left only one option. This is something our country has found time and time again, not just the big one in eighteen sixty-one, but there's even been spats between places like Ohio and Michigan. It happens time and time again, and it has always ended horribly. If we can't mediate our disputes between each other, then this republic doesn't exist. It is only there in name alone, and might I remind you, it's the Democratic People's Republic of North Korea. They're democratic in name, they're republican in name. If they don't function like one, they aren't a republic. We're very quickly heading down that road. I would argue that we are, we are dangerously close to being a banana republic at this point. We'll get to that in a second. Then the so-called Capitol insurrection. Not much needs to be said about the events, but the consequences of this are still hovering over our heads like the condemning sword of Damocles. The new administration is vowing to use the full weight of the intelligence and counterterrorism agencies against conservatives that they have determined are a potential threat. Meanwhile, prominent figures such as CIA Director John Brennan have likened Trump supporters and the, the right-wing populist movement they embody to Al Qaeda and ISIS, stating that we must conduct, quote, "de-bathification of the American people," unquote. Yet the same people stating that, uh, that we must conduct de-bathification and cried wolf about the Capitol riot are the ones that occupied our Capitol with troops seemingly indefinitely. To quote Joe Biden, "The troops will be there till the fall." The fall of what, Joe? You may say to yourself, "Well, at least, uh, that won't be me," and all I've got to say to that is, maybe not at first. It depends. I'd say I probably just labeled myself with what I've said so far as one of these people. And this is why I was very apprehensive about saying anything. I don't know what the future holds if something just as simple as this could potentially, and I genuinely feel it, label me a political enemy of the state. The Obama administration assassinated a teenage American citizen extrajudicially in a foreign country that had committed no crimes in two thousand thirteen. Abdullarun Al-Awaki, uh, was his name. This was the first massive overstep using the Patriot Act. When pressed on the issue, National Security Advisor, uh, I forgot to put his name in here, sorry, uh, the National Security Advisor at the time, oh, uh, no, that's not him, said that, uh, it was just his fault for having the wrong father. They then went on and in two thousand fifteen murdered his sister and his mother. So this is just an example as to why it may be time to start getting really concerned about the power that has been consolidated, especially since they're being supported by mainstream left-wing outlets and commentators who are calling for Trump supporters to be treated like Mr. Al-Awaki was. Those aren't my words either. Those are the words of the former FBI Director Andrew McCabe, the former director of an organization that is now criminally investigating Republican members of Congress as terrorists. An Echelon Insight poll from CPAC recently showed that an overwhelming eighty-two percent of Democrats see Donald Trump supporters and right-wing populists as the major concern for the nation, with fifty-seven percent being extremely concerned about their existence. Trump Salt and Lurwin recently Time Magazine published an article titled, quote, "The Secret History of the Shadow Campaign That Saved the Twenty-Twenty Election." If you haven't read it, I highly encourage it. They did their work. They brought their receipts, and they interviewed the people that took part in this. They called it a shadowy cabal that conspired to change the results of the election. They didn't start this during COVID, and that's important to note, because many of the changes that they pushed for were melon voting changes. They started this as early as January of two thousand nineteen. This is a clearly coordinated effort. Saying that on social media will get you banned. Sharing this article that is praising these people from Time Magazine will get you removed from the, the virtual town, or town square. They, uh, they claim that it was not a rigging of the election, but a fortification of the election, I suppose, much like the fortification of Capitol. Now what? I've done a lot of complaining so far. I've not offered any solutions yet, and simply put, there aren't many. I fear that there's nothing we can do to, or to prevent what's coming. In light of that, I think it's best we, the best thing we can do, though, is prepare for the worst and be firm in our convictions. Our commitment to the principles of the founding father and to strive to preserve liberty at home first. Firstly, it is my belief that the board should reaffirm the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution. Again, but this time with fervor. Last year, one of the board members said that he didn't think it was time for a militia necessarily yet. Well, how about now? And I'll add that this is not even an extreme thing to say at the moment, not even close to the fringe. The Texas GOP yesterday officially endorsed secession from the union. It should be one made up of the citizens of the county and led primarily by those citizens. And it should answer to the board, not the sheriff. It's not that I don't respect Sheriff Eads or trust him. It's that all of you represent the will of the people much better than he will. Indeed, many citizens around here can probably trace their lineage back to the original Virginia militia. I know my family can't. I'm not saying that we should form a small little army like the National Guard and hold drill. The Minutemen just picked up their muskets whenever they were called on. Just a list of people that are willing to do the same, if God forbid, we need it. I hope I'm wrong about all of this, ladies and gentlemen. I hope I am horribly wrong, but I'm a student of history first, and I've seen this play out time and time again in my textbooks and in my history books. It ends the same way every time. We have followed lock, step, and heel with the Spanish Republic in nineteen thirty-six. Now, of course, the events themselves are different, but the trends and forces are the same. Trends and forces that also led to the downfall of the provisional government of Germany in nineteen twenty into civil war. Whoops, I said those words. Same thing happened to Rome, same thing happened to England, same thing happened to France. We're not different. Our optimism bias cannot get in the way of this one. If we ignore the signs, it'll cost us dearly in the future. This country is the last place on earth that we should be having to have this conversation. We were supposed to be the shining beacon of the city on the hill, all of that wonderful stuff. Now we're being criticized by Angela Merkel for our political division, for the extremes that the political parties are going to, to go after each other. And in the, in the middle of all of this, we're dealing with a pandemic, and as far as I can tell, a fairly clear economic collapse. Over seventy percent of all US dollars ever printed were printed in the last eleven months. This doesn't seem that bad at first, till you start looking at the historical evidence of what happens with things like this. And also, if, if the economy does completely collapse, that will only exacerbate all of the political issues, because suddenly people will find themselves with nothing left to lose. And like I said, there's not much we can do to stop this. The best we can do is prepare here. My second proposal, um, is probably the most extreme out of all of them, or it was until Monday, I think.
Can I say something?
Yes.
We don't have time limits, but...
I'm, I'm almost done. I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't mean to interrupt you. You're on a roll, but we don't have time limits. There's some reason we don't, so you get your point across, so if you would.
Yeah. Uh, my second proposal, it's been a growing sentiment in the hearts of Appalachians for generations. It's time we had our own state Capitol in Congress. Richmond is effectively a foreign overlord and, dare I say, an extension of DC by proxy. Uh, they don't represent the will of the people even in Richmond. We no longer have representation that can make our voices even modestly heard, and this isn't meant to be an attack against our representatives in the state Capitol, but rather, it just makes political sense to ignore us, or it would be a waste of money whenever you can guarantee your elections in other places. Only the Blue Ridge can speak for the Blue Ridge. We've been abused for decades. They come here and, or they've came here and ravaged our mountains for her wealth and riches for generations. I'm reminded of a quote from a British MP in the early sixties while Britain was still reeling from the collapse of her empire. "What did they know of England, who only England know, or perhaps after all, we know most of England, who only England know?" In our own words, how can Richmond, a city further away than six other state capitals, know anything about us? How can they know how to help us in any way? If Appalachia is ever to be wealthy and prosperous again, we must break these bonds of exploitation and abuse. It is a shame what has become of the Old Dominion, and we should mourn her. But we should ask ourselves what the honorable and wise Virginian Thomas Jefferson would have done in our shoes, because I think he would agree. Whatever course we take, we must be strong, resolute, and proud, and above all, we must be free. Thank you.
What is your last name, Douglas?
Dotson.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me. My name's Louie McMurray. I am from Gate City, and I'm here today representing Hope House of Scott County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I want to also thank you for the financial support that the Board of Supervisors gave Hope House of Scott County during, uh, last year, and I'm here today to ask for your continued financial support for our organization. Uh, I do hope that all of you are familiar with Hope House of Scott County and what our mission is and what we do for our community. Uh, we do provide emergency shelter and supportive services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. That is our primary and our main mission. Uh, we do that for the victims and for their minor children. Uh, our primary coverage areas are Lee and Scott County, but we do end up serving people from all over. A lot of times, these victims are moved from shelter to shelter to shelter, and they just end up in, in various places. So we don't only serve our citizens. We end up serving people that are from a multitude of different places. We, in addition to the shelter services and outreach services, serving people that are in the community that have also been victims, we operate a twenty-four-hour, uh, hotline service, and, uh, we do community education and awareness, which has definitely been thwarted during this last year because of COVID. We've not been able to go into the schools. We have not been able to do our, um, main community awareness events like we have in the past. That has also definitely impacted the private donations that we have received, because we've not been able to be as visible in the community as we're used to being. Um, we did, of course, in October, do our Purple Ribbon Campaign. We did some door decoration contests. We did a rock hunt through the community, and things like that, that we're able to be, uh, participated in through social distancing. Um, but also, from July of two thousand twenty through the end of February, we have had twenty-nine adults that have been sheltered for various times, uh, at our shelter or at hotels. And sometimes it requires that, um, because of COVID and also because of spacing. We only have four rooms at our shelter, and even though many of the rooms are furnished with, uh, various types of bunk beds and, and multiple bedding in each room, so that there can be room sharing, uh, we have not done that during COVID. We have not allowed anyone to share rooms unless they are, eh, part of the same family. That's why we have also utilized hotels for that. Uh, we have been able to come up with a really good agreement with Hampton Inn of Kingsport, that they have been able to work with us and, um, do rooms for us in need for fifty-two dollars a night, and I think that is very, very generous. And it's also a very safe place for our residents. They have worked with us tremendously on that. And we can get to them very quickly, and of course, you all are, are very aware that we do only have one, uh, motel in Scott County for residents to stay in. So that is why we had to reach out for additional accommodations out of the county. Uh, we have also housed twenty minor children, along with their parents, uh, since July first of this year. Uh, we've served a multitude of outreach clients. We coordinate with the victim witness, uh, program through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and we go to court along with her in any cases that she has and assist those, see, clients as well. Uh, we have five full-time employees, two part-time employees, one that works, uh, evenings, and one that works weekends. So, but we do not have, uh, twenty-four-hour staff. We've just not been able to, to fund that at this point. We also have a full-time staff person on call, so we have coverage twenty-four hours a day with that. So if a hotline call comes in, that the hotline staff feels like is an immediate need, that call is made to our on-call staff person. Uh, we do utilize volunteers as much as possible and as much as been safe during the pandemic. We have a volunteer that does our mowing and landscaping. That was a person that reached out to us because they felt the need to do that. Uh, we have a volunteer that does our facility maintenance, saves us a lot of money. Uh, we've had a volunteer that's worked with us helping getting our QuickBooks set up, but we're still in need of a little more help on that, so if you know anybody, let me know. Uh, we have volunteers that help us keep our shelter pantry stocked with food. We have people that we can call when we have needs for that, when we have, uh, need of food to come in. We have a volunteer that leads a voluntary Bible study for our residents, and, um, just other volunteers that help with other needs. Uh, we have a high school student right now working with us. She comes in on Fridays and just does organizing and cleaning up and helping us if someone has moved out with doing all the laundry and changing all the, all the bedding and things. Uh, anything is helpful. We have a thirteen-member Board of Directors. We're very excited that we're full on our Board of Directors right now. They are all very active and very supportive with us and, uh, working on trying to be ready for when we can do community engagement events. We're working on planning what we want to do with that. We have one board member that, uh, has a business, and she allows individuals to drop off donations there. We are also allowed to have donations dropped off at the sheriff's office, or if people call us, we meet them at a public place for that, as our location is confidential and people don't just generally drop by with things. Uh, we work closely with our community partners, uh, the Department of Social Services, the sheriff's office, uh, with the Domestic Violence Officer, with Victim Witness, to be sure that victims of sexual assault and domestic violence have the most comprehensive services that they can during their time of need. And, uh, and as I said, our focus is victims of the sexual assault and domestic violence, so we do not, uh, house people specifically in the homeless population. But we do work to coordinate services for them and know how to refer them to places that serve them, um, with that. Uh, we do have a Facebook page. I do not Facebook myself, but, uh, we have a Facebook page, and the girls at work are really good to put things on there. They do usually have a little inspirational quote every day. They put anything about our events on there, so if anyone follows Facebook, please look us up. We also put needs on there. We have something that we particularly need. If we have a resident that might be getting ready to get their own place, uh, we might put something up on there that we are particularly in need of, and we try to get the community as involved as possible, because I think a lot of people forget that this is, it's a true issue. It's here in our backyard, and, uh, we need to remember that, that there are people in need. It affects families. It affects children. It affects men. It affects women. And, uh, there's one thing I forgot to mention. We do not house men at our shelter, but we do utilize hotels for that when we have male victims. Does anybody have any questions?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Lee County, did they find any events that you said you get Lee, you serve Lee County, too?
Uh, we had, uh, one of our board members, we do have a couple of board, three board members from Lee County, and he went to a Board of Supervisors meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the weather was iffy, and I was gonna go along with him, but was a little afraid to cross the mountain, and, but he went, so he's waiting to hear from them as well. Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. McMurray sent me a letter, and I encouraged her to come today, and I want the whole board to hear what they do. And, uh, so, like you said, a thousand dollars that we gave the last time, and whoever will be on the Budget Committee can hear this request, and when the time comes to maybe to, to fund whatever they can.
Yes. Mr. Mann has my contact information. Ms. Starch does as well, if anybody has further questions. Got information here, if anyone wants that, uh, brochures on domestic violence and advocacy and our outreach services. And we also have these small little safety plans that we give out to people. They're very tiny. They can, uh, people can put them in their wallets, and, uh, it just gives them hints on how to plan for their safety if they were to need to, and it has all of our contact information at Hope. And it has all of our contact information at Hope House on there. Where can I leave these?
You can go in here.
Okay. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Well, you're welcome. Any questions for Ms. McMurray? Anyone? Your presentation.
Thank you. I've been there since August, so I'm still very new, learning. But it's nice to love to go to work every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Beal. I'm from Nicholsville. And I'm the owner of Quench for Trash Service. And I just wanted to come this morning and share a little bit about who we are, what we do. And I've requested the board that I'll finish with. Quench for Trash Service is a family-owned waste management company seeking to provide Scott County residents with superior trash removal services. CRTS holds the necessary permit of Scott County and holds a business license through Nicholsville. We were established in July of 2019. And since our launch, our customer base has grown to nearly 200 customers. And we continue to add new customers weekly. We offer weekly residential and commercial garbage removal services as well as junk removal, clean-out services. Our approach is simple. Treat people with respect and honesty, provide professional and dependable service. And I'm confident if you talk to any one of our customers, that's how they would describe our service. Who we serve. We provide services to a wide range of individuals of all demographics. Our service has proven beneficial to all individuals. However, our service proves especially beneficial to the elderly, disabled, and due to COVID, the immune compromised who don't want to leave. We are happy and blessed to serve these individuals and often offer them discounted rates if they're unable to pay the standard fee. CRTS offers drive-up service, meaning that we retrieve our customers' garbage from back porches, carport sheds, front doors, back doors, making it the most convenient trash service possible. This proves especially useful for those customers with limited mobility. In 2020, we hauled 232,000 pounds, or 116 tons of garbage, from Scott County residents. We are projected and hopeful that we will more than double this number in 2021. It must be emphasized that our service is not only beneficial for those residents who utilize our service, but beneficial for Scott County as well. May it be noted that every bag of garbage that we haul is dumped at the Scott County Transfer Station and not the dumpsters at the waysite, the waysites. As a result, excuse me. As a result, we are progressively reducing the garbage that fills the dumpsters and therefore reducing Scott County's costs to transfer the garbage from the solid waste sites to the transfer station. As CRTS continues to grow and expand, we will slowly and surely relieve the county of the burden of managing its residents' waste. As a result, CRTS' growth is in Scott County's best interests. Our start was a modest one, simply a guy in a pickup truck. We are reaching the point in our growth where new trucks, equipment, and eventually employees will be necessary if we're going to serve our growing number of customers. Every business comes to these hurdles and we have every intention to do what is necessary to meet the needs of our growing business in order to serve the residents of Scott County. Plainly put, the dump fee that we are required to pay has become quite burdensome and is hindering, or at the very least slowing, our ability to expand and serve new customers. For this reason, we are requesting, based on the fact that our service provides a needed service for residents, especially the elderly, disabled, and immune compromised, and is progressively relieving the county of the burden of managing its residents' waste, we are requesting that the Board of Supervisors eliminate dump fees charged to CRTS for dumping its own residents' waste. We're truly grateful to serve this county. It's truly been a blessing to us. Obviously, we are a business. But a good portion of the people that we serve are those that truly need our services. And so it's just been a privilege to meet people and serve our county. And we really, truly desire to provide a quality service. And again, I'm confident if you ask any one of our customers, that's what they would tell you. And so I understand this request is, I don't know how people would consider it, but it would truly help us out to better serve our county. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Beal? One comment. I use that service. I love it. I really do. Every Monday morning, they're there. Eight o'clock, you can count on it, and very dependable. And so it's a lot easier. I haven't been to the dump. So I got, this morning, Mr. Jeter and I were talking, put signs on the dumps. And he said, well, you haven't seen them. I said, no, I haven't been there. So anyway, it is, you know, it's a good service. I don't want to plug you too much here, but I will. I think y'all are doing a good job with it. So we come out of this expression period, we will discuss it. Any questions for him? All right.
Thank you.
Have a seat and we'll get back to you in a minute. Anyone else wishing to speak during this session expression? Anyone?
Good morning.
Good morning.
David Carter from Fort Blackmore. Just an issue, road maintenance, wrong road issue on, I think Mr. Mann has already been down maybe and looked at it a week or so ago, but on Sally Monument Lane.
Yeah, sent that information to Mr. Christian and he's got back with me. He said they'll get to it. They know it's there. They dumped gravel in, I think, and put a caution barrel there, but he said they would.
Well, it's gotten considerably worse.
Since last week?
Since last week, yeah. I went out yesterday and, of course, it's past my house. It don't affect me. But it affects, it's affecting probably 10-plus families. And that is a dead-end road. Also, the other issue is the AEP substation, which is about 50 yards past where the cave-in in the road is. And if it falls in more, the road is caving in. So if it gets to where it's inaccessible to a heavy piece of equipment going to the substation, and the substation happens to go down, then you're probably looking at probably a fourth of the county, probably from Dungannon to Duffield, that the substation services with no power. And if they can't get to it, you know, across that road with their heavy trucks, then it's really an issue. So that road's about 15 foot wide. Currently, there's about 11 foot of pavement left and probably another three or four foot up under the pavement that has already fell out under the pavement. So, and you also have school bus route there also. So I looked at it yesterday. I had, I took some pictures and, you know, if y'all want to look at them later, whatever. But it's getting progressively worse. They did dump some gravel in a few weeks back. It's basically disappeared now. It's about three or four foot below road level now where the gravel where they dumped in. So it is, it's getting to be an issue.
I was looking at, I found maybe the water line leaked or something, cause of those things. The drain pipe looks like it's intact. I don't know where it's going to.
I'm not sure either because I was out there last week and there was no water running through the drain pipe that goes under the road. But the water was running under.
So that's the problem.
It was running under the drain line. So, but there was no water, surface water coming in, but there's water coming out on the other side. So I don't know if it could be, possibly be the drain, I mean, the county water line that runs through there that's leaking. I don't know. But it's becoming, it's becoming an issue. And like I said, it can be a really, a pretty bad issue if it falls through or that you can't get through with the school bus. You can't get through to the substation if something was to, you know, happen to the substation.
But I did hear back from Mr. Christian. He said they didn't get on it. They knew about it. They got the barrel there, but they dumped the gravel in it. But I told him it got worse. I hadn't looked at it since it's hard rain they had. But anyway, it definitely needs, I'd say a fourth of the road is gone. I mean, it's at least that much.
In fact, this driver that goes out through there, he said he was getting, he was getting worried to have to cross it with the bus.
Well, if it undermines underneath, you can't see it, you know, so, and then something that heavy. But I'll see where he's at on it, see what anything they've done. So maybe they've done something by now, but I guess they haven't.
No, they haven't done anything.
Did you say PSA water was going through there?
It is.
But if it's going under the drain, like he said, that's the problem. I didn't see that. It wasn't running that much when I was there. Since it's raining, you know.
Last week when it was apparently dry, there was, there was no water at all going through the drain pile.
That's the problem.
But the water is, and it's not even, it's kind of to the left of where the drain pile is. So there's water there somewhere that's eating it out, but I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Has anybody let the PSA know?
I saw the PSA truck out through there one day this week. I didn't talk to him. I just saw it. I had to go past my house.
It was how the road, the line is on, you know?
The line is on the opposite side of the road from where the cave-in is.
See, the cave-in's on the right side. The water line's on the west.
Yeah.
It probably would be, that would be an issue.
PSA can go down there and run a test. They can put something in the water and tell if it's.
Is that chlorine in?
Chlorine in.
No, but.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we will come out in a session expression period. Mr. Dawson, thank you for coming as a well-repaired speech, no doubt. The second amendment we did, the resolution, I think, is sufficient at this time. I too am concerned about what's going on around, but I'm not getting too much of that. But do thank you for coming. Ms. McMurray, does she leave? Does she have a meeting to go to tonight? Anyway, she has sent me a letter and like she says, she wanted the Budget Committee, whoever's going to be on it, to consider that increase. We did $1,000, I think, last year for this year. And so anyway, that Hope House does a lot. They do a lot for the people in the most need. So whoever's on that committee, consider that whenever the time comes.
Mr. Mann, I need a copy of the letter she sent you. I don't have the request.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Beal was here with Quench for River Trash Service. And like I said, I use them and it really helps me a lot having to load. My back balls me a lot, so I have to lift it more. My wife drives it out there usually, so we ought to get it. But anyway, y'all discussion on this, your thoughts. I know that the tries they pick up, if I put in a dump, the county's going, won't be a charge for that, but he picks it up, there is a charge. And Mr. Danks, you want to address this? You may. I know this is your area of concern, so if you need to, you can. And we'll hear from the board here too, if they need to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're reacting to when we're charging Mr. Beal is a resolution that the board did in 2009 that establishes the fees at the transfer station. In that resolution, any person disposing of Scott County trash at the transfer station, solid waste generated or collected as a result of commercial or industrial activities, including when collected by commercial or industrial waste hauling firms, residential or household waste shall pay Scott County in accordance to the following schedule. And it's the $40 a ton. And that's what Mr. Beal is encountering when he comes to the transfer station. So we're abiding by what is established under county law to do so. However, I agree 100% with Mr. Beal on the benefit of his service to the county. He's the only entity that I know of that's picking up household waste versus the entities that's picking up commercial waste, like Waste Management or some of the other companies. That waste would still have to be paid for by those companies to dump at the transfer station. So the waste that he's picking up is waste that the citizens could dump into the sites and not pay the fee. Did some quick math while he was talking. I knew the number of last month, which was 25,000 pounds. One packer truck, a full packer truck is about 20,000 pounds. So that's more than a packer truck run. In 2020, by his numbers, it looks like he paid around $4,640 in tip and fees. So, but of that $4,640 that we collect, we're paying to tip it at Blount Bowl, $3,132 that we'd have to pay anyway if it came in through our packer trucks. So there's $1,508 there that the county banked on his services coming to the transfer station. Now, that amount of trash that he hauled last year saved about a packer truck run a month. So you divide the $1,508 by 12, that's $125. And we can't do a packer truck run for $125. So I agree completely with his statement that his services benefit the county. And that if he doubles that, that's just that much more benefit. So I'm just giving you information. And that's quick math from what numbers he gave me this morning. I didn't have his totals from last year. But do you agree with everything I'm saying? But back to the resolution, that's what we're governed under at this time. Any questions?
Beal, you said there were no other individuals, private firms. Is there not one in Duffield? Do you know of one in Duffield?
We, I served Duffield.
Oh, you're Duffield? You're all over the county. Okay, great. And the other question that I might have, the only other situations in Scott County that would possibly fall under this, I'm just curious where Gate City and Weber City takes their trash.
Gate City has household pickup within the town of Gate City and charges their citizens, I think, $10 a spot and brings it to our transfer station. And they do not pay the tip and fee.
They don't pay. Weber City, do you know about Weber City?
Weber City has had a private firm that doesn't bring their trash to us. However, if Weber City's firm did bring it to us, they'd be paying tip and fee. The ordinance only allows that exemption for the town.
Towns, okay.
Yeah. If Weber City did their own, like AC's done and brought it to the transfer station, they would be paying tip and fee.
Yeah, just curious about that. Any other thoughts?
An example, my neighbor, she has a car. I don't have a truck. And sometimes I would holler for it, but now she said it's really helped her not to have to holler.
Yes.
And so it's for older people like myself, senior citizens. It's been, it's been an asset for us to just pull it out the garage and it's gone Monday morning.
I think there's 7,000 and plus houses in Scott County wish Mr. Beal would get 7,000 and plus. It would be a great benefit.
Mr. Beal? Beal, you said, you say Hill?
Hill.
Okay.
Oh, am I saying it wrong? Is it Beal?
It's Hill.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was saying.
Your mask on, I didn't know if you were muffled.
I wrote it down, Hill, so I'm sorry. Mr. Beal, it's Beal.
But I thought about this. He sent me an email. I told him to come on to this today. And so I see where he's coming from. Either way, the county's going to pay when he goes to the landfill. And so if it would help them out, I even thought about if we did a 50% reduction in what he's having to pay to start with. I know we'd have to do a resolution probably, wouldn't we, Sally? We have to do this, which we don't want, we're going to do here. But that resolution's in place. If we did something to help him, it'd take another resolution to do that, amend the one we have.
I mean, that's just, that's not like an ordinance or anything.
Right.
But it just takes board action.
Okay. But anyway.
That's what was established when the transfer station was established.
What if we, uh, cut the price in half?
Yeah. That's what I was saying too. Mr. Deal, would that be, I mean, it'd be a start, maybe look at it again later on, it'd be a big help to you to cut it in half.
Yes, sir, I mean, I appreciate that.
What about the things like tires and stuff? You said you cleaned up sites sometimes?
I mean, I, yeah, ninety-eight percent of our business is, is just the weekly residential picking.
By, by, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
And you don't have any commercial, you know, customers?
Uh, no, sir, we have operated, but no one's, no one's taken us up on that.
The, the situation would be looking different if he did have.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
All right, Danny, I've heard some real good things about his service. And it is gonna benefit the county, certainly.
Now, I just, uh, will say to the, to the board that whatever we do with the resolution, uh, will set the precedent to the way we deal with anybody else that might establish a similar business going, going in the future.
You know, we can't pick and choose who we help, uh, who we give a break till we come on, it has to be, you know, cover the whole county, anybody that's might wanna come into it. But anyway, um, you're all stopped, anything else? Do you want, uh, Ms. Kegley to, uh, have a resolution of some sort for us to deal with in April? That'd be the best way to go?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. First, let's, let's go ahead and just get a, an, a, approval, we'll vote here to allow Ms. Kegley to pursue this, and then she can present it to us in her April meeting, and then we'll take it from there. But I think it's, it's something that, uh, we need to do and maybe down the road do it even more than that, but we'll try this first and see how it works out for us.
Yes, sir. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Well, um, do I need to come up with a microphone?
Yeah, come on. Now, you'll be on the camera, everybody can look at you.
Yes, sir.
I, I would very much appreciate, uh, what you're suggesting. I, I know that there's a, there's a gentleman in, in Russell County who has an identical business and, uh, who I, who I speak with, and the board supervisors charges him, I know I paid him, uh, a hundred dollars for the yearly permit, and what they do there is they charge him, uh, I think it's always five hundred dollars a year. Um, and that basically gives him, you know, the freedom to dump whatever he, you know, collects, you know, and so whether it's a five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars or whatever, I don't know if that's something that would be a solution or not, but I just thought I'd share that.
Okay. Anybody's thoughts on this?
As long as we keep it separate, you know, from, uh, commercial, commercial trash, uh, you know, it's, is, if, if we let, you know, if, if we start letting commercial trash be brought, then, you know, then we'd have to treat everybody the same way. That's what, that's what I've been thinking, you know, I saw your email, and that's why, you know, we really have to be careful, you know, on how we would, uh, you know, as long as it's household trash, I'm all for it. I, I'm actually for not charging you anything for household trash, but as long as a commercial step, you know, come in there like tires and, because we have to pay to get rid of the tires, you know, uh, things like that, so. I mean, we've got, you know, I don't, I don't know who all has to, uh, uh, you know, the contractor, rate or whatever that is, who, who falls under that, but I'm sure there's some in the county that's having to pay, you know, under that, is that, uh, for, for, um, commercial trash?
The entities that bring the commercial trash are very few of them, it's, it's like Advance and, uh, Waste Management, uh, huge companies that pay our hundred dollar, uh, permit fee, which, you know, is penny ante to, to those companies.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, raising the permit fee and doing away with the, uh, uh, charging him for what is residential, uh, is pretty much a wash. If, uh, like I said, it, it, we, we netted or, yeah, netted about fifteen hundred dollars from his service last year, uh, but then when you take into account what we did have to do, uh, we are, we actually come out to the good, I would think, from him doing his service, so.
Bill, the difference between what Mr. Hill suggested, the five hundred dollars flat fee or, uh, half of the other, how would that work out? What's, what's your feelings on that? Five hundred dollars flat fee? Did, did that mean, Mr. Deal, that they didn't pay a tipping fee up there in, in, uh?
A dump fee?
In Russell County?
In Russell County?
Uh, no, sir, you, you didn't pay the yearly fee.
That yearly is by ordinance. Right? And the tipping fee is by resolution. It's a little bit a bigger deal to change that yearly fee than to just change what the resolution requires.
Most permits were issued in January, so, uh, all those companies have their permits for the year.
Okay.
But it really wouldn't affect anything till, till next year.
Okay. Well, if we did fifty percent, could we put a max that he would have to pay, I mean, put like a two thousand dollar max on, what he mostly had ever paid?
Yeah, I mean, you can do whatever.
Can we do it through the resolution, do it that way?
Yeah.
If he doubles, it's gonna be back to what it is now, it's gonna be a lot more, and plus the county, as big as this county is, land wise, I mean, it's, it's just a lot more miles between houses, it's definitely what it is in most places.
I think this resolution will be specific to him, you're making an exception just for his business.
If we put a maximum fee of two thousand dollars on it, that's mostly they would pay regardless of how much his business increases.
And just be ready to do that for anybody else that starts that business, because that'll be what you're.
Yeah, we can't pick and choose winners and losers. So if we did that, and regardless how much it grows, it'd be two thousand would be the max. It's still a lot more than paying that flat fee like they did in Russell County, but, uh, that way if your business doubled, we're still, that's, that's the most you would ever pay.
Yes, sir.
Is that too much, y'all think, should be less than that?
You said you paid around four thousand last year, forty-six?
I believe it was, it was four thousand six hundred and, uh.
Forty-six.
Something in that area.
In forty-six, four, he's wide open down here.
So I have a question.
Okay.
If you do a cap at two thousand dollars, could we bill him like we do now until we reach that limit? I think that would be, as far as the bookkeeping side would be easier to track, and then once you hit the limit, then the rest of that year you wouldn't be billed. That's just a suggestion.
Could you live with that?
Yes, sir.
You're all stopped, you're on the board.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, it's vote to authorize Ms. Kegley to, uh, prepare this amended resolution, was it two thousand nine, I think you said, Bill, when that was put out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To amend that resolution, to, to, to word, be worded that way, and then, uh, uh, then we'll vote on it in, in April. Need a motion to do that, to allow Ms. Kegley to do that?
I'll make the motion to allow Ms. Kegley to proceed.
Ms. Kegley made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tiff, a second, any discussion? On our favor, both saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's a motion carried. It's worth your time coming today, so hopefully, I want your business to be successful, I want every business in this county to be successful.
Yes.
And so, anyway, thank you for coming, and I didn't want you to. Alrighty, anything else in public expression, I don't think there was. Uh, Mr. Carter, thank you for coming, and that road issue is, but, uh, Jackie said, I mean, right now they're, they're absolutely swamped, they, you know, there's all the repairs and chug holes and potholes and roads washing away, so they're, they're really, they've got their hands full right now, but hopefully they get to it quick as they can. Okay, next item is the Black Gun Water Project. Frank, would you need to speak on this? You were here and I didn't know what you were here for.
This, this is the best way to spend a Wednesday morning, it's right now.
When you get educated, you know, we're gonna do some things here and get some little education here in Scott County.
Well, I, you know, I know it's listed as the Black Gun Water Project on your agenda, I was actually here to talk about the second, you know, the, the next phase of that, if we're approaching that, so however you want.
We'll put it in here if you want, that'd be all right, Mr. Arndt, that included.
We're including at the end of this.
Say again?
At the end, after we approve these documents, we'll do phase two.
Okay, all right. If you had time to look at those documents and, uh, the, uh, and the, uh, there's several of them there to, we need to deal with. Uh, Mr. Arndt, you would go ahead and take the floor on this, now we can bring back the stuff.
The first, uh, document you have on your tablet is a resolution, um, to appropriate three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant Funds for the, um, I can't read that, let me get some of the glasses, construction of the Black Gun Water Project, and, um, that we're not obligated to spend those funds, um, if the construction does not take place. The second document, and that would be signed by the county administrator, the second, second document is, um, Section Three Local Business and Employment Plan, and I believe that one's also signed by the county administrator. Residential Dis- Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan would be the next document. It's also signed by the county administrator. Fire Housing Certification, anytime that we do community development funds, we have to have some, uh, sort of fire housing throughout the year, so this is just stating that we're gonna be in compliance with that. Section five oh four, grievance procedure would be next. And it just explains, um, if there's any kind of grievance with the project, um, who the contact is to, um, make those grievances known. And then we have a non-discrimination policy that says we will not discriminate in employment, housing, or accommodations because of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, or gender, age, familial status, source of income, veteran status, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Then we have a self-evaluation site accessibility checklist that'll be completed. And then the final document is an administrative, that's a different, that's not the last one, sorry, administrative agreement, uh, between Lenoysco and Scott County about the project. I think there's one more, and that would be the agreement between Scott County and PSA, scroll through just to make sure. Make sure I don't miss any.
Can we do all these in one vote?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Cause most of them are signed by county administrator.
Right.
So it should be fine. And the PSA agreement, I think, is on the agenda for Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Frank? Do you know?
It is.
Okay.
Anyway, there's a, a lot here, it's authorizing, Ms. Arndt to sign these and, uh, the resolution all the way down, so there's several of them, and, uh, anyway, there's something has to happen to make this project go. One of the residents did call me last night concerned about, or what concerned about, what they had going on, some of the residents all above them, and that's what you'll talk about in a few minutes, Frank, about them, uh, getting water too. And I told her, I said, you're sort of in the community outreach first, so they know who to go to, because they were successful in getting the funding for their, you know, for the Black Gun Project and by coming here and doing what we did and what everybody's done with this, and Lenoysco men have been awesome in getting this done, so I really do appreciate what they've done. So anyway, uh, any comments before we take a vote, and all these, we'll do them all in one vote, as Ms. Kegley said we could do. Any comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve these as presented to you.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Uh, gee, uh, you said made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Heron, second. Any discussion? On our favor, both saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am Frank Kibler from the Lenoysco Planning District Commission in suburban Duffield. And, and I, I will note that, that package of items that you all just approved there, that's, that's a standard package of, of things that, that are part of pre-contract items for getting a locality under contract once they've received community development block grant funds, which you have for the Black Gun Project. Um, and again, why, why I'm here is to actually go beyond that, cause we are looking at, uh, submitting a block grant application for the second phase of that project, on up, on up Cliff Mountain Way and some smaller roads, you know, tributary and that. Uh, and, and I, they have, oh, they seem, okay. We, we are looking to apply for four hundred and forty thousand dollars in CDBG funding, uh, for that project. The, the total project cost for phase two, as we're calling up the Cliff Mountain Phase Two, uh, total project, there is, uh, estimated to be a million seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, we have already, on behalf of the county, have submitted an Appalachian Regional Commission, uh, funding proposal for five hundred thousand here a month or so ago. And again, we propose to submit this four hundred and forty thousand block grant op, uh, application. That, that amount is driven by the number of connections that we anticipate on the, on the, in the second phase area. We will also, um, i- i- in your all's behalf, we will also be prepared to, uh, whomever the app would need to, to submit a coalfield development water fund, um, coalfield water, excuse me, that's slightly out of order, um, application, and it comes up in, in late summer, probably, uh, we would look at doing a hundred thousand dollars through that. And, uh, PDC is prepared to commit fifty thousand, thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars out of our, our, our regular general assembly allocation for that, those projects, all those, all those should add up to that million seventy-five thirty-five, I just told you. So that's, you know, we're, we're working on that, the, the block grant deadline is April one, so we will have all this, uh, prepared for the, for the county submission, you know, by no later than that time, obviously, hopefully before. And there is a, uh, there is a, uh, as, as with previous projects, there is a, uh, a resolution for y'all to, to adopt, you know, just supporting the submission of that block grant application, should you, should you so choose, but that's what we're working on. Again, that, those items that you had done previously, you know, that's just among a variety of things that we're doing to get, you know, get the county under contract, so that Black Gun, uh, project can proceed. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, setting up a, a, a meeting here in a, in a month or so, uh, just so some of the Black Gun residents can have a, give them an opportunity if they want to come. Uh, there will be, there will be some other folks there, um, you know, who will meet in our, in our building, and just so they can come, get an idea of what, what they can expect moving forward. I know sometimes expectations can be a little, um, optimistic on how fast some of these things, uh, work. You know, everybody involved is doing everything they can to make this, particularly this Black Gun Project, you know, move as quickly as possible due to the, due to the underlying issues there. As for this Phase Two, um, application, uh, the, the fact that it's so close behind the Phase One, which is just got, you know, can work for us or it can work against us. You know, they could just, they could easily say, well, yeah, we can kinda just dovetail the two and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we can move forward, or they might say, well, you're not really ready to do that yet, but, um, uh, this is, you know, this is the, this is an annual. But this is, you know, this is, this is an annual, annual funding deadline, so you strike for the opportunities there. So we'll, we'll put the best, best face on it we can and see what happens. Again, you know, presuming your all's approval of, of, pursuing this particular fund. So that's why I'm here, Mr. Chairman. And as I said, there is a, there is a, there is a resolution for your all's consideration to submit this particular block grant application, which again, we will have in, you know, work with through your county administrator, have in by the deadline of April 1.
Their resolution, but we need to do it today?
Yeah, you have it on your tablet.
To get it done by April 1st?
You have it on your tablet.
I did.
You should have.
I didn't see it.
Phase, you know, initially, there was five or six homes, you know, that were without water, basically. They, they are going to get water first. I mean, if, if, you know, what you're saying.
They are part of the Black Gun Project.
Yeah.
There's a Black, the Black Gun Project has pretty close to 20 connections itself, just, just getting up to where you turn off on the Black Gun Lane and then the length of Black Gun Lane. That's, that's the project. It's just gotten awarded, that's the things that you adopted here just a few minutes ago to get under contract to start moving that project forward. So that, that's Phase One of, of the overall project over there. So this Phase Two project will essentially start at that, that cutoff and go on up to Mountain Way.
Okay, and, and the cutoff would be maybe the sixth house that was without water, is that what we're saying, or do you?
I don't know exactly where all those six were in that 20 or so, you know, along that line. I, I'll have to admit, I don't know exactly where those, where those are. But that whole 20, maybe 19, maybe on that one of the Black Gun thing. They are, they, they will, they will be involved in that first project. Again, in the county will be under, under contract soon. I don't know exactly, I mean, there's still some things, yeah, strings to tie up. But they will, they will be included in that first phase of the project among, I think, you know, I think maybe 19 connections. Will include those, those six.
Okay.
Right, the fact sheet and the resolution was emailed to you, I believe, on Monday. Is that the day you sent, sent over, Frank?
That's it, right.
And then it should be on your tablet, under number seven.
I don't know why I didn't send that, but anyway, it must have skipped by. I have it before, here now, so that's the resolution itself and the fact sheet. I mean, it's an overarching, we've got to do this, and I'm hoping that we'll find this that quick after just doing the Black Gun, if they will.
Well, like I said, we, we've, we've talked about it, and, you know, I said, it could, it could work one way or, or the other way. But, but, you know, if, if you'll recall, when we submitted the Black Gun application back in October, that was a really unusual circumstance, because for the first time, you know, in the nearly 30 years that I've been there, they had had something other than that once a year competitive round. They had a second round of funding. And the Black Gun Project, and actually another one in our district up in the city of Norton, was successful in getting funds through that second round project. This year, when they came out with the, when they had to have their, their annual how-to-apply workshop, and they actually already had said, you know, "We may have another, we may have a second round this year or two," but in that same timeframe, which they hadn't mentioned, you know, a year ago, that, so that one last fall was a complete surprise. And the timing of it just worked, you know, just too well to, to avoid for, you know, as far as the Black Gun Project was concerned. Again, I could see, you know, once, once it gets to the scoring people in, in Richmond, we just, you know, we just, we could see it going either way, so, you know, they, they may, they may say, "Yeah, it would be good to go ahead and do it," or they may say, "Yeah, y'all need to come back," at which point we could go back and resubmit at the next available opportunity. I, I can't stand here and tell you one's more likely than the other. It's, you know, I guess we'll find out.
Alrighty, I think we need to vote on this, this resolution, and so hopefully the second phase will happen. And do you have any idea, I mean, it takes a lot to go through to get this first project off the ground, as to when it could possibly start? They're asking me the reason, and I didn't know what to tell, maybe I said, "Well, I, I don't know," and that's what you're going to say.
Well, that's one, that's one of the, that's one of the things we want to talk about. It's one of the reasons we're trying to schedule a meeting, like I said, in early April. Because by then, we'll know more, you know, said, talking about getting, getting the county under contract. At that point, we hope to have a, you know, we could say, "Yeah, you can expect pretty much this kind of timeframe." But right now, it would just be sheer speculation on that part. But hopefully, hopefully by, you know, a month from now, we could have a, you know, kind of, kind of give a firm idea of how this thing will proceed.
Hopefully have a groundbreaking ceremony of some sort, sort of.
We got the gold shovels, got a whole stack of them.
I knew about those shovels. Alright, anyway, thanks for coming. And we'll vote on this now. So we need a motion to approve this resolution, or this small resolution for the water project, Phase Two over Cliff Mountains. So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty. Mr. made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr., Mr. Brinkley, second. In discussion. All fair and open, saying aye. Aye, opposed, so those people are going to get some water, and I'm so excited for them. You know, I really, I've never seen, and, and I'm sure Sammy's seen the same thing, people, most appreciative I've ever seen. Which, they've been with that water since November of 19, and so they, when I talk to them, they call a case, and they're, they're the most appreciative people that you ever, ever seen to get this done. And I think they even shocked themselves by coming here and getting the, getting things started. And they, they keep congratulating us, but I congratulate them for coming and presenting this to us and getting it out there. And so, anyway, we were just bottom of their league, basically is what we did. And they came here and they were, so everything worked out good. Alright, anything else on the Black Gun Project? Item eight is the Budget Committee. Need two of the seven to serve on that, and I prefer it be someone that's not on the Capital Improvement Committee. So anyway, if we can get two to volunteer for this committee, Darrell, we don't want you. How many times you serve on the Budget Committee? How many, how many years you been here, right?
Don't hurt you, Darrell.
He's been on it a lot, so I told Darrell, I said, "You know, it's, he has, he's served the Budget Committee well," and so, anyway, he really has. But do we have two volunteers that wants to serve on this? I for one, I will, I have been on it a while, I don't mind doing it, so.
Trying to nominate you all.
I'm just, I think, that's, can I do extra point on it?
Yeah.
So I don't mind, anybody's want to serve with me. You will? So it'll be myself and, and Mr. Tipton that will be serving on the Budget Committee. And we decided a long time ago about if you, if you serve on the Capital Improvement Committee, it's not a good idea to have yous on the Budget Committee. It sort of gives you a break from it too. Y'all met a lot and got a lot done, and so. I congratulate you for what you're, you've done. I haven't seen anything that you've come up with, but I will. Then let Budget Committee and then Ms. Orange will put together wind, the words, and housing, all the numbers. And folks, you know, and being on that, on that committee is, is one of the most important. But everything we've brought back to you as a full board here, when it's all gone through and looked at all the, the numbers in and out, and putting in what we can, taking out what we have to, so it's, it's a good process, it's a big process. So I look forward to serving you. Alrighty. Next item is item nine, the Resolution for the Fire Training Facility. Should have that on your tablet, and hope you had a chance to look at it, and so, Ms. Orange, you need to speak about this, you can, and we will do what we need to do.
This is the resolution that I mentioned a couple of months back, that I had talked to Davenport about. And this gives us an option with our short gap on the fire training facility between the bid price and our grant to later, if we choose to finance this in with another project that we have coming up, this allows us to do that. So it would be not to exceed $250,000 to lump this in with a later financing, if we so desire.
That is Section Three, but $250,000 is there in that resolution. So in discussion or entertain a motion to recommend this resolution for the board to vote on it? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brinkley, second. In discussion. All fair and open, saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Keith Memorial Park Cameras and Update. Mr. Vickers is here, if you want to speak to us about it. Larry, you certainly can. Never seen you in a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. I've been staying away from Coates.
I don't blame you.
Gets under, uh, celebration, and then, or something, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what to say about the cameras, but thanks for having me back again. We have requested six cameras to go up the park. We've had some vandalism up there recently. Had three incidents with trucks, truck, I say, probably a truck, Jeep maybe, driving through the park. Two of them were down around the trail, pretty much fixed itself back, but the last one was up around the concession stand up there, and they went in and spun dirt out, and we're going to have to haul dirt, sand, or something in there and fix that. Probably the same, same guy, I would imagine. I think they're having a good time, and maybe a beer or two from over at J and P. They come in and make a little mess and think it's a great time, probably some, you know, you almost have to believe it's some young kid, who knows? But anyway, the other problem we had was we had a chainsaw stolen and a leaf blower, brand new chainsaw, and we bought to renovate the park, because we bought that out of park money. And it had never been used, I bought it in May. And we had never used it. We got it out out there, was getting ready to use it the, the week before Thanksgiving. And Thanksgiving come by and went out there, and the wellhouse, which has a deadbolt on it, it's one of the only storage buildings we have, it's got a deadbolt. And they picked a lock and got in it and carried the chainsaw and the leaf blower out. So we have some ideals about who it might be, but we couldn't prove anything. Anyway, that's, I, I think we need the cameras to stop some of that. Hopefully, I'd rather stop it than wait to catch them, but if they do it, I certainly like to catch them. If you look at the park out there, we wanted to put one on, you kind of look at this picture and get an idea. There'd be one over to the right of the flagpole there, looking out toward that right parking lot. And that'll catch traffic coming in and anything going down that would drive around the trail back there. And then there would be another one over the left-hand side where the senior building is, that would look out toward that parking lot. Which one I need to push, Bill?
One on the right.
One on the right. One on the right, move it, okay. And then there would be another one up at the senior building looking, going through the gate, so we'd get traffic in and out of the gate. The next one would be out at the concession stand, look at the big parking lot in the playground out there. And the final one would be down on, if you've been up there at the baseball field, it'd be on the press box, looking back toward the wellhouse and the area where we keep the lawn mowers and stuff. So I've talked to Michael Delando, and he, he's interested because of the amount of drug traffic will get up there. It's, it's way down, because they're doing a pretty good job of patrolling that and coming in there. But it's still happening. We've got drug traffic up there. I see it. And if I catch what I think's pretty, pretty good reason, I'll call 911 and have them send a deputy by there. But usually, when they see me, they go to, I mean, they, they stay away from her. And Kenneth helps, the maintenance guy, if he's around, they'll kind of fend away. But if he's not there, sometimes you go out there and you see drug traffic still happening. But that's, that's what we're looking at, and I believe about $1,500 or $1,600 to do the six cameras.
$1,500, $3.93.
And we're fortunate, because we have an internet in the, internet connection in the senior building. And Scott County Telephone has put an internet connection, and we have AC power out at the press box. And then they came out about two or three months ago, and right just beyond where you come down those, the ramp from the Jody Bridge there, they put in another Wi-Fi there, part of this COVID stuff, I guess, I don't know. Anyway, we got, and we got AC power there, because Scott County just come and put it up. So we, it's reasonably easy to put in because of all those connections we have. And that'll give you the ability, the sheriff's department can look at any camera at any time. I can look at any camera at any time. So we shouldn't really have it, have it covered really, really well.
Does it record and then loop, is that what it does?
It, it's got a one gigabyte, I believe, hard disk on it that we're recording and keep information on you. And they're high-definition HD cameras, so it'll get good resolution out, they tell me about 200 feet. I'm not an expert on security cameras, but you get, and you can, you can identify a car, maybe not a tag number, or even coming through the gate or like down, down the roadway there.
Are they on all the time, or is the movement activated?
Pardon?
Are the movement activated, or are they?
No, they run all the time. They'll be active all the time. You could, you could log on and look at anything that's going on out there, which will really help the sheriff's department with the drug traffic. It'd probably scare them away, they'd go somewhere else, but, but anyway, that'll, that'll really help with that. And I, I, it'll help with that other stuff too, I'm sure it'll stop some of the other stuff.
That's $1,500, $3.95, is that for all six?
That's for all, that's a complete ready-to-go system.
Do you have to pay a monthly too?
No, because we've already got the internet, and we've already got the power, so we, there's nothing, no expense whatsoever there beyond that. And the county's going to put it in. Matthew, what's his last name?
Brad.
He's going to put it in for us, so.
Good. Alright, I mean, I mean, to me, it's a good deal. Six cameras, $1,500, $3.95, not bad, so, not bad at all.
Yeah, we, that'll give us really, really good coverage. We looked at trying to do it with four, but we're only talking about less than $300. I think cameras are 40 or something a piece.
Yeah, $99, $99.
Oh, $99. We're only talking about $200 for two more cameras. And that gives us a lot better blanket coverage than it does just with the four cameras.
Well, you've been here today, maybe the world get out that the cameras are coming, and they're about to do this, and then they will say, "Well, let's go."
I'd much rather run them off, and I would to catch them, but if they do it that gun, I'd like to catch them too. Because it is aggravating when you get something stole like that. We're going to have to go buy at least a leaf blower. Derek's going to loan us a chainsaw to finish working around the trail, but we've got to buy a leaf blower to keep the moors, we don't keep the moors cleaned off and stuff, we'll be doing maintenance on that. So we're going to have to spend a couple hundred dollars, maybe $250 for a leaf blower. But we'll take that out of our, our funds, which we don't have many, but. Anyway, let me, I want to go through and just show you what the project, last year, when I was down here. Keith Park's been operating 21 years now, and it's remarkable at the amount of business that we've had up there, even up until this COVID-19 hit. But when I was down here last year, we talked about six major projects, senior building, the concession stand, the amphitheater, the little cabin, and a couple of shelters, the wellhouse, and the bridge wall, and then the chain link fences. And I can report to you, we're probably 99% done on that right now. We've got a little touch-up work to do here and there, but we're essentially done, and you'll see that in some pictures. And I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. First of all is the bridge. If you look at that bridge, and, God, that picture turned out real small, but you see, like a friend of mine said, that's a yellow bridge, bridge back there. Underneath that was yellow, it was painted yellow, and, and the, those bridges are made till the rust runs off of them, and that was running down, making a really muck down the side of the bridge. We painted all that brown, so that's gone away. It's much more attractive as you, as you come into Nicholsville. And the Scott County Vocational School is going to get a Twin Springs logo to go on that wall to put out there. And it's going to be 3D letters raised up. They're going to cut it on that laser machine. And it should be a really nice sign to go on that wall. We're trying to figure out where to put it out there. But Jeff Kegley's going to get that done for us. But that too has been delayed with the coronavirus, because the kids are not going to school. The next picture is about the fences. You can see the rusty fences that we had before, and look what they look like now. It's a huge difference. One of the things that made, from an appearance point of view, believe it or not, One of the things that made, from an appearance point of view, believe it or not, was the fences. It made it look totally different out there. Another picture of the fences is around the ball field out there, you can see they're getting real rusty. Here's a picture of that same piece of fence. One of the challenges of getting all this fence painted was, of course, you get paint all over you, but taking that Corrie pipe off the top, easy to take off, really pain to get back on. And finally, I found a tool out on the internet and the vocational school built us one. So we got, they built us a thing to put it back on with and made it a little bit easier, still hard, but.
They give a patent on that?
Yeah, it works, but it's still, it's not the easiest thing, but it works a lot better than trying to do it by hand. This is going out toward the trail, the fence going out toward the trail. The next thing is the park buildings. Let me get caught up here, I'll stay up with. The first one you see here is the amphitheater. That's the way she looked before we started. Here's what it looks like today. And not only did we paint, clean that amphitheater off, all those benches have been painted and never been painted before. The next thing you see is one of the shelters, that's the one down in the woods. This is what the shelter looks like, this is the one that's enclosed, it's got the storage after we finished. And of course, that other shelter, I just showed you, has the same, we've done the same thing to it. Here is a picture of the wellhouse. This is one, we have one little project we're doing, a wellhouse, and that's the caulking around it, paint the white straps on it. You'll see that right in this next picture with the wellhouse, it'll look more like that when we finish. So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta paint the strap, racing straps around the wellhouse. The next thing is the senior building. There's the picture of the senior building, if you remember, we had woodpeckers parking holes and we fill all that up. And here is a picture of, I'm working on the end of the building. The Southwest Baptist Partnership loaned us that lift that it cost us seven hundred and fifty dollars over an action rental to rent that. And they loaned us that to use to do that, so we saved seven hundred and fifty dollars right there. And this is what the Keith building looks like today versus when we started. A quicker reference here is, here's kind of what's going on. In nineteen, we had a hundred and nineteen rentals. Last year, our rental rate dropped to thirty-three, and this year we've only rented one time. So we're really struggling with revenue right now. We, in nineteen, we were running just under fifty people a rental. Last year, we probably averaged just over twenty people, that's how much it was down because of COVID and the number of people showing up. Right now, we've got three bookings out there, is all we got. So we're really, we're really hoping to get rev back up. I talked to Danny Dixon this morning, he's getting us a couple of ionizers to go into the big building and the restrooms out at the concession stand. So we're hoping, we've had those, and I talked to the health department, we've closed the restrooms down out there and they've been closed for a year. So hopefully, we'll move people from about behind the trees back to the restrooms again. We're hoping to get them up, he's gonna give us two large ionizers for the senior building and one to go in the restrooms when we can move it. Just manually plug it in, leave it for fifteen minutes, it's supposed to kill everything in there. We're still charging a hundred dollars for weekends and holidays, seventy-five, that's eight hours, seventy-five dollars for four hours for weekend and holidays. And sixty dollars anytime during the week for any eight-hour period. And fifteen dollars additional an hour. It's a low, low rate, it really is. Come up back on. Okay, operationally wise, our revenue and, and this gives you an idea of what's happened to us. Our revenue in 2019 was nine thousand seventy-eight dollars. It dropped to thirty-four seventy-six last year, and this year we made seventy-five dollars, and that was for a lunch and funeral. So outside of that, we've had zero business. Rentals, those hundred and nineteen included the seniors who's free and a couple of other things that we allow people to use the building free. But we had a hundred and three paid rentals in nineteen thirty-three last year, and we've had one paid rentals this year. Here's kind of the story, we're bank account wise, we ended nineteen with over nine thousand dollars. We ended last year with under three thousand dollars. And we still got a hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents left of the money to do the renovation. That's gonna go quickly. One of the big surprises and what we really got hit with was, it was two things that really, really hurt us in terms of getting that done under the budget, like we would like to. One was, paint went up thirty or forty percent. Then we couldn't get it, we couldn't get, couldn't buy but a gallon or two of roofing paint to paint the fence worth of loads. And we had to make multiple trips and trips every week just to pick up the paint. So that really run our expenses up and then going from under thirty dollars to forty-eight dollars for a gallon of paint. But by any measure, it was successful. I mean, it was a successful project and I want to thank the board of supervisors and particularly the Scott program, Justin Venable, for doing a really, really good job of helping us with that. It's been a great partnership and it's worked well. We're gonna try to use our money to do the rest of it. I don't want to come back and ask you for anything else if we can just get some revenue coming in. Fortunately, we spent a lot of money last year because we had to get ready for the coronaviruses, we bought extra stuff of that. And we bought the materials like we was gonna have a lot of rentals, so we've got some stuff left over. If we can just get a little bit of participation going out there, I think we'll get through this. We're hanging on with our claws, but we're, I think we're gonna get through this without coming back and asking you for anything else. That's about what I've got. Oh, one other thing I want to mention to you, our well has gone bad out there. But I hadn't had the opportunity, it's been bad for a while. I went out and looked at it myself, but it won't start. Just with a regular meter, I can't tell if it's a capacitor bad or if it's the pump bad. If the pump's bad, we gotta pull, we'll have to pull that well.
How deep is that well, do you know?
I'd have to guess, probably like everything else, three to four hundred feet somewhere in that area. The, here's, the other challenge with that is at that, when we built the wellhouse, the pump, the, is inside it with no hole to pull it out the top. So it had to be a hole cutting the roof and some extra stuff down, but I'm gonna get Matt Scalp, he's got a capacity checker. We'll go out there one day and see, hopefully it's just a capacitor and we can get it started. But I couldn't tell anything with just a meter. But they're gonna need that and we might oughta see if the school might help us with that, because they're the only ones that really use it. They use it to water the ball field with and the dirt and stuff. And otherwise, we'd have to run some water off of the little cabin down there. And then that, we're getting into painting water from the PSA and it wouldn't take long, as much water as they use out there to run a pretty good sized building, I don't think we want to do that. But that's, that's what I have. Thank you all very much, it's been great.
Do you know if they're gonna have Nicholsville days this year or not? You heard anything?
I haven't heard anything, no.
Well, I asked the mayor at Dunkin' about Fourth of July at Dunkin', and she wasn't sure on that either, so I don't know. I think it's time to start having things.
Yeah, we're gonna try to open back up and do Little League, they called me about that and I told them to go ahead and do that, just to practice all the guideline safety as much as I can. And then the high schools definitely gonna play baseball, so we're gonna start to see some activity out there. The only thing that's increased out there is the walkers. Outside of that, it's been really, it's been, it's been off, really off. All right, any other piece of good news is there's a cell phone tower that works in Nicholsville now.
We were talking about that earlier here before the meeting started.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, it's not covering Teller Town like I thought it would, but I don't know, maybe, I may try to get ahold of the project manager, see if he can talk to Verizon, see what's going on with it. It should, the guys that put that up told me that it should have covered eight to ten miles. I know it's kind of down over a hill, but.
That's the problem, I would say.
That's probably the problem.
Move a corn ridge, can you lower it some?
Yeah, that's where it should have been put. Well, if we'd have went up to the water tower up there, we'd have got another hundred feet up on top of the hill up there.
All right, thanks for coming, we're going to this, fifteen hundred and three dollars and ninety-five cents, is that correct?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three cents, okay. And we are okay, our contingency fund, I'm sure we're okay there. All right, you heard the things explained to us here from Mr. Vickers, do we have a motion to approve this from our supervisor contingency fund? Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Harris made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Lieutenant Second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Let's take about a ten-minute break.
Oh, let me just mention one thing.
Let's have fun for a while, get all this stuff. I hate to end the conversation, let's get started. Call the meeting back to order. The next item is bookkeeping.
Appropriations, please appropriate ten thousand dollars to Circuit Court Clerk's Technology Trust Fund, capital outlay, office equipment two nine dash two one six five five dash eight one zero two, for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office. Appropriate nine thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars to volunteer fire departments, state paid contributions, three two two zero zero dash five six four five, for monies received and deposited at the treasurer's office, and that's all the appropriations.
Okay. Need a motion to make appropriations as described by Ms. Starren.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
This is the second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Hundred grants, please accept Virginia Tourism Corporation twenty twenty Recovery Marketing Leveraging Grant, zero nine two zero dash zero zero eight dash R M L P for tourism. If accepted, please establish budget code seven two six zero zero dash five six two seven. Reimbursement will be appropriated after received and deposited at the treasurer's office. And accept D E Q fiscal year twenty twenty-one Competitive Litter Provision and Recycling Grant. If accepted, please appropriate five hundred dollars to the established budget code for litter control, D E Q grant supplies, three five two zero zero dash six zero zero three, and that's all of the grants.
Do we have a motion to make these appropriations from the grants?
I'll make it.
Mr. Harris made a motion, who's second?
I'll second.
She's the second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And under transfers, please transfer twenty-five hundred dollars from Board of Supervisors contingency, one one zero one zero dash five eight four zero, to Information Systems Manager Software Maintenance, one two five four zero dash three three two zero. This was an item that you approved via email for the cloud-based software antivirus. And transfer three thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars and six cents from Sheriff's Fuel, three two, three one two zero zero dash six zero zero eight, to Sheriff's Vehicle Replacement, three one two zero zero dash eight zero zero one, and that's all the transfers.
Do we need to separate those? Sound?
I don't think so. I wouldn't think so.
Okay, I'll make sure. All right, need a motion to make these transfers as described by Ms. Starren.
So moved.
All right, uh, Ms. Grubie.
Ms. Grubie.
Y'all do sound alike from here, I'm not kidding, you know, my whole day's kicking in, but you do. All right, Ms. Grubie made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the appointments, uh, Ms. Tannen is here for that, so keep looking, please.
As your applicant is in charge, and you also have a later, and the South West is in the community construction. For the South West's community corrections, they sent a letter to Georgia, and they are requesting that she be reappointed to the Criminal Justice Board, and that she should be appointed as, uh, hold that position.
Okay. Do we have a motion to appoint, uh, Ms. Starren for this position?
So moved, Ms. Tannen.
Mr. Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right.
Every doctor has a score, they comprehend some policy management team. We have one applicant, Amanda Johnson.
Do we have any nominations for this management team?
I'll nominate Ms. Johnson.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination cease, vote by acclamation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Ricky, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
The courthouse facilities committee, Lisa McCarthy has been serving, and she has reapply.
Do we have any nominations for this position on the courthouse facilities committee?
I'll nominate Lisa McCarthy.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination cease, vote by acclamation.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Ms. Grubie, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy, serving on that, we appreciate you, you doing that. All right.
Have a service authority, he has three positions. Ed Beleda has been serving, and he has reapply. And Marshall Tipton has been serving, and he has reapply.
Okay. Okay, well, uh, for the first, do we have any nomination for the first position?
I'll nominate Jeter.
Any other nominations? Not, no motion, nomination cease, vote by acclamation, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Grubie, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And the second position, do we have any nominations for that position?
I'll nominate Marshall Tipton.
Any other nominations? If not, entertain a motion, nomination cease, vote by acclamation.
So moved.
Ms. Grubie made a motion. I'm gonna mark it here, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ricky, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Did you abstain? Mr. Tipton did abstain from that vote. All right, that went rather quickly. Next item is, uh, Ms. Cadwitz, County Attorney, do we have anything, anything for us?
I do not have anything. Happy to answer any questions. You'll have my report coming up.
Any question for our county attorney? Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is, Governor of County Administrator, any claims that we may have? Ms. Starren.
You should have the green paper in your folder for treasurer's accountability and claims. The available cash is eight billion eight hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Claims for the month, um, early claims. Total seventy-two thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. All claims total two hundred eighty-three thousand, I'm sorry, total current claims are two hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred four dollars and thirteen cents, with total claims three hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Um, I'll go over some of the larger ones. Advanced disposal for January was thirty thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, we did get the A T L funds for the fire departments, that's what you see for each department, getting ten thousand three hundred eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents. That was their disbursement for the A T L funds. Uh, J and J E Bo, uh, to equip three Dodge Ram trucks for investigators, twelve thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. And Towne and Weber City was CARES Act reimbursement for some of the expenses that they had, fifty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. And we returned thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars to Commonwealth of Virginia for Department of Elections unspent CARES Act funds. So if you have any questions, uh, I'll do my best to answer those.
Is all this today, uh, I noticed the, uh, we got a whole lot more than we had in eighteen... we got a whole lot more than we had in 18, 19, and 20. It's always today already took off of this over here.
It is.
So we're, uh, looking pretty good.
Well, we're 2.6 million above where we were this time last year, so I notice that too. It's, uh, so anyway, best we've been in a long time.
Y'all digging up money somewhere or what?
They got money for it.
It'll start being spent, it's getting close to the end of these budget year.
As a school board with Trump, they're...
Not their full amount.
Not full amount. Last year we held back 197,000, will we hold any back this year?
No.
No, they probably don't want to hear that, but...
No, the only reason that we didn't do the full allocation last year is because the General Assembly waived the local required match, and that has not been done this year. So they'll, they'll receive their full budgeted amount.
And also, we'll be, uh, in the year, the regional jail will probably did a pretty good checkup to them too, they'll make up, I predict that.
Uh, the estimated amount's around a little over 500,000, but that'll be in next budget year.
Okay, that's right, wouldn't it?
We do have some funds that we can pay part of that this year, and that would be my suggestion, once we get to June, to help, because the regional jail costs is going, with the reconciliation and our increase, it's proposed to be about a million dollars next year. About what we're paying now.
Are they adding any more people to the SCOTC program? They're still having court, aren't they? Past shift of the days.
They are having court, but they don't have jury trials. So I don't know how that affects the program.
I don't know whether it's paying anymore in that program now or not.
I can try to get a nut date from them at your request. And then share that with everybody.
So you're saying our cost will be about a million dollars next year more over this year, the regional jail cost, you're thinking?
With the reconciliation, yes. Um, we're looking at an increase in regional jail costs alone at around 454,000. And then our reconciliation amount will be five or a little more. Those were preliminary numbers I received in January, so they'll change.
I remember you talking about it before, it's going to happen, so. It'll be good for now, Darrell, so. Marshall, we got some money to play with, can we get any pet projects?
Just don't say that.
Got any pet projects in you, you don't want to... I'm teasing. Please don't print that, don't say I said that, I'm just teasing. Just joking. Anyway, if you're on the budget committee, what they do in the, in the, in state and federal, if you got pet project, you know, they throw it in there if you're in a, they do with the budget. So we don't do that here, let me, I'm just joking, but...
Just pass it on now.
Well, you're not going to have it in the next budget.
Yeah, well, next year we're going to be, right, it'll be, that's a good point. Our graph will be down, so.
Didn't we think that some of those inmates were going to maybe start to be moved? Or is going to give them the...
Right, they, the last meeting I had, they said that they had started moving the state inmates. Uh, the last count I had, we had 50 with over two years, and that's a big chunk of money.
Yeah.
But I have not got an updated report since then.
But that's still without change with the reconciliation for next year, right? Those numbers are pretty much already...
No, they're not set yet. They just give a preliminary budget in January, and then closer to June, they do a final budget. I guess it's, um, April? Probably will be the final budget.
Yeah, so hopefully, if more of those people move down, as Jeremy, I mean, yeah, has talked about, and that could help.
But still, we owe up until they move them.
Oh, yeah. And we had, we were budgeted for 165 inmates, and the last number I had was 190 as our, our daily population from July to current. That was January 25th.
Is there anything else we could do to put pressure on them to either pay up or move them or something?
Well, I think the General Assembly had a bill in to up the per diem. That'll help a little bit, if, I'm not sure if that was actually passed.
Was that what, oh, okay.
So, um, I'll have to look into that and see if that was passed.
That wasn't what we talked about last meeting, the, uh,
Yeah, you passed...
We passed, uh, that...
I think you did a resolution for the regional jail.
About 10 million dollars or something, yeah.
We did. Thank, did Laura, we got, uh, that SCOTC service program to be a lot more than that if it wasn't to have that program.
See, like, 47 in it right now, 48 or something, that's what they said last meeting.
Yeah, 48, I think. But I remember when we, four, five years ago, it was 29 they had, and we had a fit over that. Now it's 20 more than that, so, anyway. Is there other counties that's about this year on the regional board, I mean jail board today?
No, and I have other meetings with county administrators, and I never say anything about it.
Why would be the all in one festival?
Because it's the regional jails in our county.
Yeah, no, but they got to pay that too, I mean, they just, I mean, they pay their own inmates if they got every how many's there, they got to pay, they're paying too. A lot of people out there thinks, because in Duffield, that we're paying all of that, but we're not, they pay their part. You know, Lee County and, uh, Wise County, City of Norton, they probably do too, but we don't, we're not responsible for their inmates.
And Lee County has started a work program as well, just within the last month or so.
Really?
Uh, Wise County called them first a couple of years ago, they got started in, uh, probably three, four years ago, and it's worked out good for them, getting people out and staying at home instead of being there and to do the two o'clock head count, whatever, to do 2:00 AM, I think. Who's there is what you pay, so.
I think we're the only locality besides one other in the southwest regional jail authority that have an increase for next year. I think everybody else will have a decrease, best I remember.
And I'd listen, it'd be okay if the state inmates were there, if they'd reimburse us. And we got federal inmates there that, that the federal reimburses for, if the state would do the same. I say, we got a room for them, break them, you know, but we, we got the room, but they're not going to pay for it. So that's the downside of it, we just, what, $12 per inmate that they pay?
Yeah, something like that.
And the cost is, what, $36, I think now. So you're talking about that much difference that we're having to pay for those 50 extra.
Didn't the cost go down from 30 to 29 something?
You've got to add in so much for debt service as well.
Oh, okay.
But the cost per inmate, like Darrell said, is decreasing for next year.
Hopefully, we'll see it here, anyway.
How about the, um, for the emergency services with Roger and so forth? You know, he had a big stack of them, and they were trying to work through all of this, what we have on that?
I'll get an update from him and see how things are going. I haven't heard him say anything about it.
I know, we were talking about that before COVID and so forth, and, and I was thinking that there were, were going to be some meetings and so forth, but that never did really happen, I don't think.
We did meet with Mr. Clear.
Did you, okay.
Uh-huh, and him and Roger got together, and they were working on getting some things revealed. But I'll get an update on him, and that's been quite a while ago since that meeting took place. So I will see, um, how Duffield's doing with their reimbursements.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know Duffield took the blood of that, but, uh, Nicholsville's actually been called to the jail. So, you know, all of our, uh, EMS, you know, we need to make sure that, of course, Duffield's the biggest, biggest, I guess, but, uh, even Nicholsville's been called, you know, to go to the jail to pick up inmates.
I asked Roger at last meeting when we had, when he was here, and he said he was still having a problem collecting some of the money.
Anything else on claim before we vote? If not, need a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
You made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
This is the second, any discussion? All fair and proper say an aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
You know, one of the problems with, with, with that, with the EMS, you know, when they, when they bill the inmates, you know, and they're in jail or considered in prison, whatever, they don't have insurance. You know, their insurance is canceled. It's the way I understand it, and until they actually get out, yeah, their insurance might go back and pay it, but if they're in there for two years, that's, you know, that's a problem, you know, it, uh, that's, that's part of the problem anyway.
Yeah, anything else? Miss LaNis, you have anything, Miss LaNis?
I do have one thing under miscellaneous. Um, I just want to give the board members a heads up that at the April meeting, we will have, um, the VDOT six-year plan on the agenda for each supervisor to pick a road in your district, um, to add to the plan, and then we'll let VDOT decide the order of those.
Okay. Will they be here for that meeting, or, uh, I know at one point they were talking about coming to our meetings, you know, bi-monthly or quarterly or something, but, you know, that's...
I could see if they're available, are you wanting them here for an update?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you sent me that on the, uh, on the roads, but that just has the funding aspect of it, it really doesn't give good explanation of that, so we know exactly what we're at on the road that we currently have. A spreadsheet, you sent me a spreadsheet.
That's all I have.
Right.
That's all the roads that's on the plan at this time.
Yeah, there were like 20 some roads, but it seemed to me like they were down to a much less number of roads that they were actually, had to surface. It's not the last recollection of that.
I'll have to get that from VDOT.
Okay.
Because I don't know which ones on the list they've completed to date.
I appreciate it, all right.
Anything else? All right. Pam Cox is here for a presentation from the tourism, so Ms. Cox, if you would.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good.
Um, I will. I have to wait for Bill to come in. I'm sure, I have, I have an actually short report today, so you all will be glad of that.
No, of course, I thought last year's done was excellent, so it's, it's enlightening and entertaining.
Well, thank you, well, um, well, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be entertaining. Okay, so, um, we ended our, we ended our Shop Scott Win Bucks, um, in January. We, uh, Crystal Cox was the winner in December, and she is one of the first people who said, "I am using my money to buy Christmas gifts." And the other two had actually used their $500 gift card to go in and pay their taxes. Um, Lydia Morales was the winner in January. The contest ended, we had 4,192 receipts were received. I counted every one of them, and they all went into a spreadsheet. Um, I went through every one of them and made sure that they all were in Scott County.
That's a lot of work.
It wa, it was a lot of work, and some days I would walk in and I would go, "Remind me not to have an idea again." So, so, and, you know, every once in a while, you would get a receipt that was from, like, Parks Bell or Lowe's, but, you know, I'm sure it was just because they'd gotten stuck in with their other receipts, so. The total of the receipts for the contest was $186,825.73. So, thank goodness for, um, Excel spreadsheets that, uh, that can add those things up.
That's pretty good.
Um, and I think it was in January, 1st of January, I applied for the first round of the Virginia Drive 2.0 grants. And this Virginia Drive 2.0 is the Virginia Tourism Strategic Plan for Growth in the Tourism Industry. The plan focuses on what should we be promoting and what should we be building? It's like a five-years' out. And I will have to tell you that I spent day, you know, I've done a lot of Virginia Tourism grants. This was the hardest one that I've ever done. I really had to think, I had to use some brain power. It took me several days to complete it, and I was really shocked when we made it into the first round. They're doing three rounds of this, so you can see the other, um, the other DMOS that also got into the first round of applications. But just because we made it to the first round, that doesn't mean that we're going to get the money or the grant. This is a three-pronged, um, approach, so. The next thing that you had to do was, once you got in there, you had to fill out a survey. And I sent it to, I picked about 50 people and asked if they were participating. Many of you all did, and I really appreciate those who participated in the survey. I did get, um, some complaints about the survey. My husband took it, and he used a few choice words. It's, if you're not, if you're not real familiar with tourism and tourism terms, I think it was a little bit hard for folks. You took it, didn't you? Did you agree, think it was a little bit, um...
I didn't have any questions.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate you all taking that. And then the next thing, I think we're up to 30 now, you had to have 30 completed. And then the next process is, you have to do a three-hour Zoom consensus building meeting. And I need 20 people to do that, so I will be, once they give me the go-ahead, we'll do a doodle poll. And, um, I will be recruiting folks to do that. Um, I may have to resort to bribery to get 20 people to do a three-hour Zoom. Um, I've been trying to think about what I would do, and I would, I would, if you all do it, I'll invite you to the farm, and my husband and I will cook for you, so. I don't know, I'll come up with something.
I can't be persuaded of a hamburger, remember?
Oh, okay, okay, so, yeah, you know, people, I always found out that people were easily persuaded, I think. Um, so, since we got, since we received the 20,000 marketing leveraging grant that you all just put in, um, Scott County, the Town of Gate City, and Carter-Family-Fold, since we all got the $20,000 marketing leveraging grant, we decided to kind of go in together and send out a RFP request for proposal for marketing services. This would help us maintain consistency in what we're marketing, and so that everything is recognizable as coming out of Scott County, Virginia. I mean, it also helps us achieve some efficiencies in the spin. For example, in April, um, the Town of Gate City and I are going in together and purchasing a four-page ad in Blue Ridge Outdoors, and that is actually less expensive than if I was to buy a half-page ad. So we're doing that together, so. And that was also something that the tourism committee wanted us to do. They thought, you know, now maybe is the time to send out a request for proposal and get an agency in. And as it, and as it turned out, it came at a very fortuitous time, on the day that the RFPs went out, I learned that the gentleman that I have worked with for years and years, and has done our website, and did the video for us and everything last year, and has done other things for us, was relieved of his position at NET360. So, that means we lost the person who does our website, um, who does, and he, he had been a great marketing partner for us. That organization had been a great marketing partner for us, because they knew how our budget worked, and they, you know, knew what we could spend, and they were willing to kind of work around and everything. So I sent out six RFPs, and I did send one to NET360. I did not receive anything back from them. Um, we received four replies, we interviewed three of them, and, which, one was eliminated, and we interviewed, ended up with a major discussion on two of them. Um, Frida, Mr. Dingus, Greg Jones, who's the town manager, and Rita Forrester and myself all participated in the interviews for the RFP. We ended up choosing Corporate Image in Bristol. They are the agency of record for Bristol Motor Speedway and the Bristol Chamber, and believe in Bristol. And of all of the proposals that we received, this was the most complete marketing plan that, um, and it, you know, it's things that, that we haven't done, that we've probably needed to be doing, and so Mr. Jones and I are going to meet with them on, um, Friday and kind of go through and discuss things that they need from us, and get started, and how we're going to proceed from here. But, you know, just working together, it will help, instead of, instead of the Town of Gate City paying someone to do a video for them, and then us paying someone to do a video, we're kind of, if we do it jointly, we are, um, able to save some monies. So I think it's going to be beneficial for all of us. I actually wrote things down. Um, a couple of weeks ago, the Appalachian Regional Commission put out a study that highlighted the opportunities in... that highlighted the opportunities and challenges in Appalachia's tourism economy. And if you can see, they did case studies on several towns within the Appalachian region that are using tourism to build and focus on creating a new economy. And I pulled out a quote from Irwin, Tennessee, which is their neighbor, and they realized, I mean, their quote was, "No one is coming to save Irwin, so we have to save ourselves." And this kind of, kind of what this is talking about goes hand in hand with the Virginia 2.0, and what, what do we need to promote, and what do we need to be building, so. You know, I thought that came at a good time. You can go online and look at that study. But the things that it talked about was that we need to embrace the ma- major changes in modern tourism. You know, you have to remember that, I mean, I'm not, you know, when I grew up, and when I started in this industry, everything was print-based. I mean, I have a journalism degree and worked for a newspaper, and I would have never, ever thought that newspapers would be where they are now. Everything is a digital, digital age. And it's not, you know, it's not a mindset for me. And so you kind of have to learn that technology, and that's something that the new agency that we're working with will help us to do. So, um, if you want to take a look at that, they did several case studies in how that these communities are, um, focusing on tourism to build their economy. I've continued, you know, I mean, pandemic has continued to keep Carter-Fol close. Um, she will not be able to open until probably the governor gives the full go-ahead that we can, everybody open safely. So I've been working with her to try to find funds. Um, we looked into the shuttered venue through the Small Business Administration, and then, and she could have gotten s- some really significant funding for that. But, um, because they don't have any full-time employees, they're all volunteer, which it counted against her. So, um, so she's not eligible for that, so we just kind of keep trying to look for ways. Um, she's doing okay right now. I mean, they're covering their costs, their associated costs, because even though they're closed, they still have things that they have to pay for. Um, just, just from what I have heard and talking with folks, um, Natural Tunnel says that their summer program, gramming will stay much the same way that it looks like it was going to be like it was last year with limited uh, facilities open and, but the Town of Gate City is going through with, um, right now with doing their music, starting in July. Something Squatchy on the Clinch changed hands. Uh, there is a family from Indiana that has purchased that, and they are actually moving down here.
What is that? I don't remember.
Something Squatchy. You drive right by it, and if you go on the Clinch River.
Yeah.
Did you not go down the Clinch River Highway?
Occasionally, down Paulson.
Okay, so, it's probably what?
Five miles down off Clinch River Highway.
Ain't that far.
Maybe two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if you go, if you don't go sixty-five off of twenty-three. They are, uh, it's campground and outfitters, and, um, I mean, he did, the owner last year did a bang-up job, but apparently he ended up, he and his family moved back down to Florida where his family is, and now he's running a fishing boat. So, I guess maybe that was his dream job. But, so anyway, she will be in town this week. Um, they're going to move in. And she has already joined the chamber. Camp Clinch, I have met with them, and they are ready to open in April. And also Something Squatchy will open the first of April also. Clinch River Live, I, I've talked with him, and he is going to have, at this point for this year, five primitive sites, and they're, and still do the tubing, and they're still looking at maybe a Memorial Day weekend opening. We're going to do Kiss the Grid, the fifty-mile bicycle race this year. It's not a race, it's a ride that we did in September of last year, but we're going to do that in August. So we're still trying to, you know, go ahead with things, and of course, every, you know, it, it's all fluid. Um, you know, you just kind of have to go with the flow and pivot when you have to. Uh, I will tell you that, I don't know if you all are familiar with Adventure Mendota. Um, she was on the Holston River, and they did not open last year because of COVID, and they have decided to close their business. Um, not so much so that they didn't get business. I mean, she was probably one of the best ambassadors for small business and entrepreneurship that I've ever seen. Um, she probably put a hundred thousand people on the, on the Holston River a year. So, I mean, it's just incredible. And they mainly did tubes and did some kayaks, but, um, like all of us, they're getting a little older, and I guess they just decided that they didn't, you know, it was still, you know, everything's still unpredictable, and that they just didn't want to try to open back up this year, so they are closed. The Devil's Bathtub, we did, we did get all of the materials for the Devil's Bathtub kiosk, so thank you for the $500 from the contingency fund, and we spent exactly
That's good if you like.
So, so we were, uh, the guy, the, the guy from the park, he's just amazing. I mean, he knew what to, you know, just knew what to go in and buy and everything, and it was great. Um, when finished, it'll look something similar to this. The front of it will have a map of Scott County with a legend, and the back of it will have sites, locations in Scott County. And, um, depending upon, and this is, this is in my tourism budget, so, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and and tell you what the Tourism Committee, what we have discussed. Uh, you know, we have the old MEO C bus that sits down there. We've talked about running a free shuttle service from the Devil's Bathtub parking lot to the trailhead, not all the way up in there, because I don't think that bus could go up in there the way that that road is right now. And it would be a free shuttle service that would run on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, hire an intern, and, you know, the Tourism Committee thinks this would make a lot of sense. We would have someone there during the prime hours of visitation. That person would help serve as an ambassador for the county, and it would help us accomplish a mission that we're trying to do with the MLP, and to, you know, encourage people to get out and don't just come to the Devil's Bathtub, but, you know, visit all of these other places. We're doing a new brochure, so all of that will be there. Um, and they can also provide safety information, and they can help us be good stewards. We can make them give trash bags, and, um, tell people to pick up what they take in. Uh, I, it, you know, it's all fluid. We, we don't know what we're going to do. It just depends on what we're able to do this summer. Um, the goal is to hire an intern. Ideally, we would like someone like Bill Dingus and his children, who know this county inside and out. Someone who really, really knows the county and loves it and has a passion for it. Um, you know, I would be, I would be more than glad and willing to do it when somebody can't do it. I, I am not a good driver.
We all know that.
I'm live TV right here in this.
Well, well, I mean, it's, it's full, full, full disclosure here. I mean, have you all, have you all not ever seen the size of my car?
I haven't. No, I didn't. But I'll, I'll park away from it.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, let's see. How many times, how many times have they had to pull me out of places? Yeah, I mean, they, they've had to pull me out.
Does she have a county car, by the way?
Well, I do have a county car, but a lot of times I drive my car, and, um, they pull me out of ditches more than one time.
And strawberry patches.
And strawberry patch, yeah. You know how the, you know, one day I was at Mann's Farms, and I thought, boy, that grass over there sure does look greener. And I think I'll go over there and take a picture. And I guess it had just rained, and you know how the, the grass is always greener on the other side? And it never dawned on me that my car would get stuck over there, but it was stuck. I mean, it was stuck, stuck. So, uh, let's see.
Just be sure if you get stuck, you got sales service.
I didn't. I think I had to walk out for a while. Yeah, so, well, one time I was stuck at the Devil's Bathtub, but I did have a radio, and I just picked the radio up and I said, "Hello? Hello? Is anybody out there?" And Greg, he answered, and he said, "Who is this?" But anyway. So, okay, uh, I'll go on to the next thing. Um, in, I guess it was in November, uh, I was told that DWR was going to, somehow, it somehow, it slipped through every, all, all of the tourism folks that DWR was going to start charging a fee for, to use, um, their access sites, like the one there at Clinch Port and everything, and this was really going to impact, um, folks like Clinch River Live and Natural Tunnel State Park. They were going to actually have to pay a fee. Um, and that was going to start January first of this year. So, that legislation has been put on hold. Now, they're not stopping the fact that they're going to do it, I don't think. But they're still taking it under advisement and taking it under consideration, so they have pushed it back. Um, but, so if you had, if you had a fishing license, or if you had some other licenses, you wouldn't have to pay this fee. But, um, I think it was what, twelve dollars to?
No, I think it's like three dollars.
Three dollars, but, and it's, you know, it's kind of like one of those things, you know, more, I don't know, just more government, more policing, but, um, you know, and, and I understand that, that they need to make money and things like that, but anyway, we hope to have some input with that. Um, the lady who was the lobbyist for Heart of Appalachia, um, kept us informed on that and kept us up to date, and also Virginia Tourism Corp went to bat for us to kind of, you know, um, just wait until people had more information and everything. So, and then I just go to my normal, regular report with my media report. Um, we were down last year in terms of media. We had ended up with $218,605 in free media. Right now, we're at $37,726. Our Facebook is almost at 20,000. Um, Holly Vires did a nice story about the Nicholsville Creamery in the newspaper. And actually, that story has run twice. It was, Holly did it, and then it was in their agricultural section, um, a couple, I think it was this last week.
I'll say when she did it.
Last week. Yeah, so, um, I have a couple of presentations that I'm doing tomorrow. I'm doing a marketing presentation for the 4H Shark Tank Challenge. I'm going to advise these young people as to how to market their products. They have some interesting things that they're doing. One's doing lawn service, someone's doing goats, um, and things, so I'm going to, we're, of course, it's a Zoom, and then, um, on March the twentieth, I'm going to talk to the Daughters of the American Revolution about tourism. So. Right. Is that your group? Okay, yeah, I saw you. Speaker. It's a Zoom at nine o'clock on a Saturday morning, so we'll be all smiles and happy. Um. I, I, I am not a morning person. I don't wake up until about ten. Uh, so that's it. If you all have any question, oh, 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 I did forget. One thing I didn't put it in here. Um, so, once again, Devil's Bathtub won another honor for, um, and Blue Ridge Outdoors is the best swimming hole. So, um, there's an ad in here, and, I mean, you know, folks just continue to be enthralled with the Devil's Bathtub, and so if they come here, we want them to go to other places and spend tons and tons of money in Scott County. So.
One thing you said about that fee, you don't want to charge them. They did that, the federal did back several years ago, and it killed hanging on the park. People were not paying three dollars, and it's never come back.
It's never come back.
Because I'm not paying that, and, uh, so, and even, I went to, uh, Mark Camplake. I knew it was a fee area. I went and make a U-turn, I got to take a picture, looked back, and got the ticket on my card, fifty bucks, fifty-dollar fine, because I didn't, I got out of car to take a picture. I said, "I'm not walking on a technician," but it was fifty bucks.
Really?
Because I passed the fee thing and got to take a picture, and then, I was going to make a U-turn. I said, "What leg's pretty," you know?
Yeah, well.
Lesson learned.
Yeah, well, my, my husband always gets out and pays the fee, so.
I'd make a U-turn. I would. I didn't want to get out.
I, I, I don't, I don't care where we are. Keith always goes and puts the money in, you know.
He better than me. I just, you know, make a U-turn and that.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Your presentation.
Yeah, I have one, Pam.
What?
Uh, did the tourism have anything to do with the fence down at the Love Sound? That looks real good.
Actually, that's the town.
They've done a good job. It looks good.
The Town of Gate City has done that. I mean, the Town of Gate City has really spending some money on some improvements and everything. And they've been, they've been a really good partner for us to work with. Um, real easy to get along with, and they're real interested in bringing folks in here, so. It's a good partnership. It does look good. I think they were going to do, I think they were going to do a split ramp here.
Yeah, it's up.
Yeah, but they were going to do like, one of those like you all have, like where. And why they didn't do that, I don't know. I think it's har- is it harder to do that?
No.
Us.
Stack will be in it.
Oh, okay, so, but anyway, they didn't do that, so, yeah, I think it does look good.
It probably took more rails than they wanted to use, because you need a whole lot of rails to do it.
Anything else?
Don't leave yet. I want to, uh, do we have anything for close session? We don't do it.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, uh, we're at comments and requests, so I'm going to go first, while you're standing there. We had a meeting last week, Pam and I did, with the Horse Association, and, uh, they're going to have the Scott County Fair this year, and I thought Jeff might be here. He's, you know, to do a little presentation about it, and they're going to have a carnival too. And it's August the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, I think.
It's, it's.
The last weekend of August.
It's the last weekend of August.
And then, uh, the, uh, they'll have 4H stuff on Thursday. The carnival rides will be there, uh, Friday and Saturday, and then have Cowboy Church on Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, that's in the, in the works, and, uh, so when we met here, we, we talked in depth about it, and so they may come with a budget committee to ask for some money. We had given before toward that Scott County Fair, but anyway, something we might need to consider whenever, uh.
They've emailed me that request.
Did they?
Did my dad, did they ask for a certain amount this time?
Ten thousand dollars.
It was five thousand what we did before, I think, then the other one had a fair over there, so.
Well, they asked for ten.
Anyway, I wanted to throw that, because she's on the, on that committee with me, and I didn't know if you want to add something about that, uh.
Well, oh, yeah, if you want to come, March the twentieth, they're doing that day.
Yeah.
So, and I, what do they do at that day? Do they check their hooves?
Yeah, they do, and, and Dr. Fuller will be there. Dr. Fuller will be there to give, you know, ready shots and stuff like that too, so. It's going to be an eventful day. Hopefully, the weather will fall great beyond the twentieth.
If, if you've never been to a horse show, you really need to go. I mean, they're, they're fun. I have, uh, one of my granddaughters is really into horse riding, and so we went. We've taken her two or three times, and, you know, every time we're finished, she's like, "Papi Keith, will you find me one of those?" And we have a place for a horse, and why he doesn't, I don't know, so.
Back a few years ago, they asked me to do the announcing. I said, "I don't even have a spell horse," you know, "I've never done it in my life," and anyway, uh, I said, "I agreed to do it," but I went on YouTube to see how to do it. Well, one of the volunteers said, "You've done this before," and I said, "No, I haven't." But you can find stuff on YouTube. It'll tell you how to do it, and that's where I learned to do it. I done three or four times. It was fun to do, and, uh, so, anyway, it's the, you know, until I went to turn and all that stuff, and it was, you know, but it worked out pretty good. Be a, I was very, again, they said, "You don't before," and I said, "No, YouTube is really good tool to go to and see how to do things."
Yeah, so, so look forward to a fair this year with Carter-Fol and Ron.
And it's a Scott County Fair. It's not, nothing about Dungannon or anything. It is a Scott County Fair, so, anyway.
Thank you. You all have a good day.
All right, we're down to comments, requests, recommendations. Mr. Jig, we'll start with you.
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Tippy.
Uh, just a question, I guess, for Bill, with regard to the cameras at the Solid Waste sites. Have you installed any, or are we any closer to that, or what are we at on that?
I talked to, uh, Scott County Telephone Co-op.
I talked to, uh, Scott County Telephone Co. last, last week or maybe it was the week before, I think on the Friday. And, uh, they're, and gave them a girl head on five sites. So, uh, they're, they're working on it.
Okay. Is there a, question had just came up earlier. Is there a requirement for, uh, surveillance signs out there to, you have to put them out there or?
There is no expectation of privacy at the solid waste sites. It's a private place. But we will put a sign that, uh, to inform people that.
Is that a requirement?
I think it is.
Oh.
Somewhere I saw that. I, we did at a church, we did put signs out. You recommend we do that?
We've looked into that before. I think if there's an expectation of privacy.
Okay.
There's a sign required, but if not, it's more of a, uh, just a blackness. But we, we will at the sites, uh, fully intend to put up signs, uh, subject to video surveillance.
Anything else? And I appreciate the staff and what you're all doing to make us look good up here. Mr. Hearn.
Appreciate what everybody's doing. Of course, everybody's had road trouble. Every road in Scott County, I think there's something wrong with it. Of course, all this rain, just be, if the people would be patient, uh, I'm sure VDOT will eventually get to it. But there, there are some roads that are getting impassable, you know, and it, that's something that we've been talking about. You know, this, uh, the thing we voted on last meeting, you know, not to, not to go along with the, uh, the abandonment or the, uh, whatever else they said the road would be. But anyway, you know, there was a reason why that road became abandoned. It's cause somebody down the road, down, down the line said that they weren't going to maintain those roads anymore. You know, I, uh, I, from, I've not got any calls from the assessors that's out. But I can say that they are out and they are doing their job. You know, I've seen them every morning at Nicholsville, you know, having a little powwow. Some of them are at 7:30 in the morning, getting ready to go out and spend the day. They've already been to my house. I wasn't there, but my wife talked to them. So, uh, uh, I know it's a lot, it's a thing that the people don't like seeing, but it's something we have to do. You know, taxes, you have to pay taxes. That's just part of it. Uh, but, uh, they are doing their job and I'm, I'm pleased so far. Of course, the end result will be the, you know, when, when they get done, see how, how good of a job they have done. But they are, are out and about. But, uh, appreciate what everybody's doing. Like I say, hopefully, I think I said this last, last meeting, hopefully this year is going to be a whole lot better than it was last year. So.
Amen.
Uh, and we're, seems like we're off to a whole lot better start, even though the way the things are anyway. And I'd like to, you know, I, I know he left, uh, but the first guy that spoke, uh, during Citizens Agreement Period, Mr. Dotson. Dotson, yeah, Dotson. You know, it, it, it really takes courage and ambition to get up in front of somebody. And, uh, you know, I, I praise him for that and I, I agree with, you know, there are some things going on in our country that, uh, you know, we need to be vigilant about and keep on top of it. And, uh, and you know, we, uh, he spoke about the Second Amendment. You know, the board before us, you know, passed the, uh, Second Amendment sanctuary counties. And then we, uh, we added to that, you know, at the beginning of this year, uh, about some legislation that was going on in Richmond. Uh, that we, we, we didn't stand for that. And, uh, uh, so, you know, he, really, really appreciate him coming. And, uh, I, I didn't get a chance to tell him that, but maybe he'll, he'll hear it. But, uh, but anyway, it, we really need to pray for our country and, uh, you know, keep on the straight and narrow. It's very important, more now than I think it ever has been.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brinkley.
Uh, one or two things. First of all, a shout out or bragging on some people about, first of all, the courthouse sign. I think you started it, didn't you Sam? And then Bill finished it, but if you've not noticed, it's, it's finished.
Courthouse is two words.
Courthouse looks good. It has, that whole front, you, the, the columns and then the capital on the top, the whole thing looks better. It draws your eye up to it. You can actually see the architecture in the, the old courthouse and it looks good. So that was, job well done. And, uh, the other thing, Matt Wright was here earlier, but I'll brag on him, Freda, you and Bill can pass it on. These cameras, he's doing a great job, he and his staff here. They helped Nicholsville out now and, and I think they're the ones that's going to have STE with those cameras. They're doing a good job on the sound too, I think's better. And I'd say that was Bill and Matt. Last month or month before I break down the, the Moxon Gap road project, how well it was going. Well, I passed down there last week and the whole side of that mountain had slipped down. But it's the best time in the world for it because they've still got all their equipment down there and they're working on it already. If you look at that mountain, it's raw. It's, it's not solid. It's dirt. So I don't know how long it's going to slip. But with this wet weather, be patient with them there in Moxon Gap. And, and like Mr. Hearn said, the, the roads out there, I'm getting calls, you know, washouts and gullies and, and things like that. But that's just, just this time of year. We just have to be patient with it. I suppose that's all. Thanks to everybody. Appreciate you.
Something which I would say, uh, I was saying, they said the fair things I was going to talk about. But that Moxon Gap, that's one of the issues that I used to VDOT to try to get them to build a bypass around the other side of the mountain over there. Because if something happens there on 23. We're done, I mean, it's for emergency transport, the hospitals, everything. It's like 54 miles if you have to go around that. So you got, you're sharing that gap with the creek, the railroad, and the four line. And so if something happens there, I mean, we're, would be in a heap of trouble here uh, because of the fact that the road, you know, it's the main road north and south for a lot of people. Lee County, Wise County, definitely us, uh, it would be, do you see what's already happened? It slid off there where they worked on it.
You go to Sneeball or Russell County?
Yep.
That's it?
Or maybe they go through, you know, through that way. But anyway, it'd be, it'd be tough to, to navigate through if you have a major earth movement or some sort of block at Route 23. Anyway, that's one of the arguments I used in that presentation to VDOT back in the day, trying to get that bypass built. All right, Mr. Hearn.
I was really pleased to see the automatic doors on this building. That was very nice, especially during the pandemic. You don't have to touch anything. You just walk through. So I was pleased with that and I was pleased with the courthouse name. I thought it looked very nice. Still have a close relationship with VDOT. Now, you know, it's roads washed out, holes in the roads, and these are unhomed roads. And then, you know, we're, we'll soon be into the dust season. And, and I still get calls about water. Fairview Phase Two Project left about three houses with no access to water. And, you know, that's, we don't have water. I, I think their water is contaminated down there. So, I mean, I realize we get, um, grant money to do these projects. And I, projects, I guess the cost cannot be counted up to begin with so that you don't look bad. A very wise being said, count up the cost. So if you can't finish it, you don't look bad. So, you know, I get lots of calls about water and then dust in the summer. And those are two things that we have to have to live. We have to have clean air and we have to have clean drinking water. So those two things are my focus. And I will do whatever I can. I mean, I have no power over either one. But I will be a voice to the people in District Six concerning those two items that are essential to life. And that's up my hand.
Thank you. Again, good job on that from Larry out there. I hadn't even thought about doing that, and she did. And so you got that up and going. It really, I took a picture of it the other day. I was so impressed with it, so. Ms. Brinkley.
I just want to say thank you to all the staff again. I don't really have anything else.
All right. All right, with that.
Thank you for the, thank you for the, uh, presentation this morning. I was not expecting that.
I didn't know you were taking that and I always intended to and never did, just like this lady and some other part, but I commend you for it. All right, anything else before we end? Am I going to motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hearn made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Brinkley second. I'll clarify what I'm saying. Aye?
Aye.
Motion. To adjourn. We're done.
Maybe I'll have some tax.
You know, the Larry courthouse, it really made it, it does something for us. I don't know what it did.
It made it look more prestigious. If y'all want hok house stuff, make sure to get it here, like, just the little things.
But it's a historical building. Put the name on it.
That's my contribution to Scott County. And that's maybe the only major thing that I do as a surprise. It'll be there maybe when I'm gone. Freda, I have a, like, another idea. Tours Scott County, major places in Scott County. Like First Broad Street hasn't seen you, but they're always looking. And if we hit key points to where, you know, they spiritual could go.
He's going to take his learner's test. I was hanging.
Yeah, I mean, while she was talking.
Yeah, I know the, uh, the new class that the chamber does for, uh, like, to learn about Scott County. And they do that. They totally would.
Oh, I think that'd be great. I want to go on my sales.
But she would be your personal, I'm over the committee. Tourism. Okay.
I don't know. It's a different, very, very different world.
Oh, it's a, it's a southern. It will meet and I, parents say it. Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not sure you meant for tourism. No, it's nothing official. You just, you know, that. Are you doing that?
He puts people in those situations to strengthen.
You doing the, okay. Oh, yeah, and you're going to do the, yeah. Yeah, I told her I would. Did you get calls? I'm frozen dead for that. Is it one time? Sir, anyway. Maybe I'm just cold.
I've got it all day.
I think we're in the stage.
You want to? You didn't have last, last phone. I was worried about, I thought, I wonder, I, that it's not sensitive.
No, I could mirror. I hate something for a long time.
Well, when you got a lot of your dogs like you, when you don't come, I'm not going to watch you guys.
Well, I'm glad you can. Yeah, I watched, uh, I was in Florida.
I'll let you know. I'm excited to get on the drive.
Oh, my God, your dogs, the news this year. This is like professional. It was really good.
Did you get licenses for your dogs this year?
Oh, one time you did. Uh, I'm going to make it for, for ready shots. I went back there and gave them for mine. That's it. They call me when I came in and I didn't even have this baby.
It's like nature. It starts with one, it's safe. If it's not taken here.
Hello there.